Good evening. The Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Board of Trustees has now convened in a board work session on Thursday, August 3, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the boardroom of the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District, Mark Henry Administration Building, located at 11440 Matsky Road, Cypress, Texas, for the purpose of reviewing that portion of the Monday, August 7, 2023 regular board meeting agenda designated as action items and to hear designated reports and recognitions posted in the meeting notice as required by Texas law. I want to welcome the members of our audience and our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As a Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and to hear the matters discussed. Audience members may not participate in the meeting outside the designated agenda items for citizen participation or public comment. Disruption of the meeting by any person, including the audience, is inappropriate and will be addressed by the board president or the board's counsel as meeting parliamentarian. Continued or repeated disruption of any board meeting by words or actions may result in removal or loss of the privilege to attend the meeting. Prior to this meeting, board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. During the course of this meeting, the board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting, as permitted by Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on the district website. They will also be available as video on demand on the district website following tonight's meeting. For the video to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. And let me turn mine off now. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District, attending with us tonight. We have Grace Handley from Representative Dr. Tom Oliver's office. Grace, where are you? Raise your hand. There you are. Good evening, Grace. We have no scouts present this evening, perhaps next time. The invocation, pledge of allegiance, vision and mission statement, remarks and recognitions, board comments, and citizen participation will be presented at the regular board meeting on Monday, August 7, 2023. At each open meeting of the board, patrons who have registered in accordance with the procedures established by BED regulation may address the board during the designated agenda comments period prior to the board's consideration or action on the item, unless the agenda is otherwise rearranged by the board president during the meeting. Agenda comments will generally be taken prior to each agenda item. For detailed information and instructions on registering to speak under agenda comments, please go to the district website at www.cfisd.net. Patrons who have registered to speak this evening may see the order of names listed on the screen behind me. Before your name is called, please move forward and sit in one of the two reserved seats on the front row to my right. When you approach the podium, and as you can see, there are two, one to my right, one to my left, you will see a monitor inside the podium. When it is your time to begin speaking, a digital presentation timer will be displayed at the top of the monitor. The timer will be set in accordance with the number of speakers registered this evening. There will be a 30-second and 15-second warning light on the monitor to wrap up your comments. We will now proceed with the reports portion of the agenda. 3A, the administration will provide an update on the superintendent's search. There are no speakers on this topic this evening. Marnie, do you have any comments for us?
Well, we, as we discussed with the search consultants, we wanted to make this monthly item so that our community was aware of where we were in the process and also to allow the board, if there were any comments that you all wanted to make or share information that you wanted to share about the search process. As you know, we're still early on, and we do have a webpage that citizens can visit to get information. Since we had the presentations for the search firms and the board selected a search firm, we've met with the consultants once. The board has met with the consultants, established a timeline, and the applications are open and they're coming in. At the board's direction, worked with the consultants, and we're going to be working with focus groups to gather specific information from the community about the process and the qualities and characteristics that our community would like to see in our future leaders. And we've got multiple opportunities to provide input, including a short open session for anyone in addition to the scheduled focus groups from a cross-section of community members nominated by the board. And then we will also have an online survey. Teresa's wonderful communications team is working on that at your specification, and we will have that ready to go right after the next board meeting. And so at the next board meeting, we will have done, conducted the focus meetings, and we'll have an update for you at that time. But otherwise, I guess I would turn to you, Mr. Jackson. Is there anything that the board would like to share in regards to the search?
Any comments? Let me look to my right. Let me look to the left. I would say a thank you to my colleagues. We had a number of sessions that were in closed session. The conversations were robust, they were detailed, not spirited very often, but I think we all came away with the understanding of what our goal is, which is to select the very best individual to lead this district for the next seven to 12 years. And we are all focused together on that single goal. We had very good conversation how best to bring in participation from the community. As Marnie pointed out, there are a number of different avenues that will be available, and we hope that the community will in fact avail themselves of those avenues. So I appreciate the work done by my colleagues, but also our consultants, and of course, Marnie is working as the facilitator in this regard, and so she has a significant burden to bear, and most of it will be done in the shadows and away from the light of day because certainly we want most of this to be confidential until the final candidate is selected, which won't happen for some time. Moving on, item 3B, the administration will provide an oral report on the discipline trends in CFISD. There are no speakers on this topic this evening. However, the speakers would be Dr. Stewart, Dr. Agumike, Dr. Baker. I don't know who's going to take the lead.
Good afternoon. Dr. Henry, Board of Trustees. Student Services is responsible for board goal two, safe and healthy environments. This includes monitoring all classroom incidents that result in removals from face-to-face instruction. This evening, Dr. Ifeogumike and Dr. West Baker will present an overview of discipline trends in our district over the last five years. Dr. Agumike, take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Stewart. Good evening, Dr. Henry, President Jackson, Board of Trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you the district discipline trends for the last five years. As you heard, Dr. Stewart has given you a quick overview of the goals that we support. Last year, Student Services partnered with the Hanover Research Group, and Hanover Research conducted a comprehensive analysis of the district discipline data for the last five years. They focused on three areas. They looked at the discipline population, which would be students who are involved in discipline. They looked at discipline actions assigned, and they also looked at disproportionality. Along with our partnership with Hanover, we also partner with district departments. We work with several departments, such as our counseling and our psychological services team, to look at the behavior initiatives we have in the district, continue tweaking them, and identifying how we can better support students. So this evening, Dr. Stewart chaired, Dr. West Baker, one of our district psychologists is here with me, and he's going to start the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you all. So in a few minutes, Dr. Agumike is going to be reviewing last year's discipline numbers. But of course, in order for numbers to have meaning, it's also important that those numbers have some context. And so before we talk about CFISD specifically, I'd just like to take a minute to talk about student behavior within a broader context. So as we all know, in March of 2020, Cyfair ISD entered the COVID lockdown, along with most of the rest of the nation, with many students not returning to in-person education for, I don't know, until the fall of 2021. For many educators, the start of the 2021 school year felt like getting hit by a truck. They were faced with academic gaps and deficits. They were faced with new behavioral challenges within the classroom. Colloquially, we refer to this truck as the COVID effect. And when we take a look at the behavioral challenges that we're facing now, and we are, it's easy to attribute everything to this COVID effect. However, when we take a look at behavioral trends and mental health trends in the preceding 20 years before COVID, we can see that we've been staring at a looming mental and behavioral health crisis for the better part of two decades, and that's just been exacerbated by COVID. So on the screen here, we have a timeline of the roughly 15 years preceding the COVID lockdown, and we just have a few snapshots I'd like to review about the mental and behavioral health trends preceding that. From 2007 to 2018, ages 10 to 24, the suicide rate increased by 57%. 2011 to 2015, youth ER visits for mental health and behavioral crises increased by 28%. Teen lifetime THV vaping rates from 2013 to 2020 doubled, and recent use as defined by once use at least once in the past 30 days, that use increased by 425%. From 2011 to 2019, absences, so students who self-reported being absent from school due to feeling unsafe on their campus, that increased by 50%. And all of these resources are interesting, all of them reputable, but I want to call your attention to this first, when the U.S. Surgeon General's Advisory Report was released in 2021, and this is the U.S. Surgeon General reviewing mental and behavioral health trends in these years preceding COVID. And they track a number of interesting statistics, and they track with that main theme that we've been seeing, a mental and behavioral health trend. But what's particularly interesting is when they talk about what's potentially contributing to these trends, and it's important to understand that because our children in this district are facing all of these. So starting right here with the growing use of digital media, we know there's been an explosion of social media throughout the early to mid 2000s. We know that social media use among our youth is quite pronounced and growing. And although correlation doesn't equal causation, we know that we can associate increased social media use with decreased mental health in youth, in particular with regard to self-image. And it's not just that, we know that by increasing access to social media with our youth, they're also increasing exposure to social stressors. And this isn't just broad social stressors. We're also talking about increasing access to things like cyberbullying, as well as social aggression through social media. This one, I want to pause for a minute because it does affect our youth directly. Mental Health America is a nonprofit organization that tracks mental health prevalence within states, as well as the state's population access to mental health supports within the community. They release a state ranking on these metrics every year, with the most recent report, 2022, with regard to youth mental health prevalence in Texas. So this is the rate at which youth in Texas are reporting mental health symptoms of, say, depression or anxiety. We ranked 46 out of 51, and that's 51 including Washington, D.C. Number one would be top, 51 would be the bottom. In terms of individuals in Texas' ability to access mental health care for these mental struggles, we ranked 51 out of 51. And so what we have in Texas broadly and in our community specifically, we have a prevalent mental health, prevalence of mental health struggles, like I said, a growing mental health crisis, as well as limited access to supports within the community relative to other states. Certainly, drug and alcohol availability and use has been on the rise, talked about the THC vaping rates, as well as increasing academic pressures. But certainly, to temper these numbers a little bit, it's important to point out that our youth, Gen Z, Gen Alpha, they do a much better job of expressing their own mental health struggles, they did a good job of confronting the taboo of talking about their own mental health struggles. And because a lot of these numbers are based on self-reports, when they're more open to discussing their own mental health struggles, we will see these numbers increase somewhat so that we can attribute some of the increase to that. So this was all pre-COVID, this was all leading up to COVID, and then COVID hits and we go away to lockdown. And during that time, our students experienced a 20% increase in anxiety symptoms, 25% increase in depression symptoms, a moderate increase in impulsivity and irritability. And now we're here, a year past COVID, and we are certainly seeing that, those same mental health trends across the nation, but this study in particular is interesting. It was released in 2022, and it focuses not on the youth mental health, but on the perceptions of educators within the nation on the students that they're serving. This was a survey conducted, as I said, in 2022. It was released early this year. 84% of respondents, this was 1,100-something teachers across 42 states, believed that students that they were working with in the classroom are now behind in self-regulation and relationship building relative to the year preceding COVID. 68% reported an increased concern about student behavior, again, relative to the year preceding COVID, and this is a national trend. So all this to say is that we have growing needs in the area of youth mental health and in the areas of youth behavior, and this is nationwide, and this has been happening for, again, 20 years. These challenges are complicated, they're multi-layered. When a teacher deals with a student's behavior in the classroom, that teacher may only be, that behavior may only be somewhat related to anything that's actually happened in the classroom. We say that mental health and behavioral challenges are ecological, so they're impacted by all the facets of the world that a child lives in. And so it's important to understand these facets and the fact that all of these layers have taken a hit in the past several years. We talked about the individual, at the individual level, all of our children, many of our children have experienced an increase in mental health or behavioral challenges. Families, the family unit is certainly not immune to that. We've had parents who have been impacted similarly, and the family unit has struggled. We've also seen a lot of our families take an economic hit, this has been nationwide, and that's also been local. Within the broad community, COVID resulted in a reduced access to social connections and support networks, and now we see people trying to regain the steam to re-access those mental and behavioral and physical supports that they had beforehand. Certainly, in the last decade, we've seen an increase in cultural clashes, our children are not immune to this. You know, they're aware of the 24-hour news feed, as well as the doom scrolling that comes from readily available social media. And then when we're talking about our ability to intervene in these challenges in our own students, we have to take a look at how these challenges have compounded over time. So rewind the clock for 10 years, to 10 years ago, we have a student who was struggling then. What are the implications for that now for a high school student who may not have received the supports they needed over that time? So that's the big picture, that's the big national picture, that's the big chronological picture in which these discipline numbers are occurring. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Agumike.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. And now that he's given us a little context, we're going to peer down and look at our district, our discipline trends. And when we look at it, I think Dr. Stewart shared earlier that classroom removals, we focus on in-school suspension, which is what we know as DMC, out-of-school suspension, placement to the DAEP, and expulsions to the JJAEP. I want to just give you an idea of who we're looking at. We're looking at a very small percentage of students in our district. And when we look at the data, I'm going to present the data in three different levels, elementary, middle school, and high school levels, so you can see how the three areas compare, and we're looking at a pattern over five years. And here is our elementary pattern for the last five years. When you look at the data, I know that we've talked about so many things going on with Akidos, but when you look at the general trend in elementary, you can see that there's been some decrease in in-school suspension and out-of-school suspension. So the numbers have stayed pretty steady and actually decreased in some areas. When you look at placement, last year, we placed only 24 students at our elementary level. So generally, our data has remained the same, in the same general area. When you look at 2018, 2019, and look at our placement, we had more discretionary and mandatory placements put together than we've had in the last two years. Now, this is our middle school data, and you will notice right away that the trend is similar to the elementary trend, and just slightly different in the increase in out-of-school suspensions and also increase in in-school suspension, but not by a dramatic change. We see these ebbs and flows every year with discipline actions. But strikingly, when you look at expulsions, you will notice right off that we had less or fewer students expelled at the middle school level. Last year, we had nine, and this year, this past school year, we had five. 2021, 22, we had nine, and 2022, 23, we had five. So that's, you know, significant decrease for expulsions at the middle school level. And this is our high school data. You see the same pattern as we have in middle school. There's slight increases across discipline actions, but not too much. We did see just a, you know, increase in our mandatory placement due to some of the laws that changed, requiring students placed for certain behaviors. So, but generally, the numbers have stayed pretty consistent. There were more mandatory placements than discretionary placement at that level. The next chart now is our overall district data. And I spoke earlier that we had increases at the secondary level for middle and high school, and that's what you're going to see. When you look at the overall district data, you're going to see slight increases across the board. But when you look at our expulsions to the JJAEP, even with the struggles that we've gone through over the last three years, our expulsions have stayed pretty steady. In 2021, 22, we had 39 students expelled to the JJAEP, and last year, we had 40 students. In 2018, 2019, prior to the pandemic, we had 37. So that shows some alignment. Now we're going to focus on some big key findings, now that we've quickly looked at the data across the three levels. Generally, we found that in-school suspension actions decreased from 2018 to 2022, but slightly increased in 2023 at the secondary level. We found the same pattern also for out-of-school suspension at the secondary level. And when we look at ISS and OSS and look at the students who were removed from school, we, out of over 118,000 students enrolled last year, just over 7,000 students received out-of-school suspension. Now we're going to look at some key findings for our ALC placement. We have two ALC locations in our district. And I noted earlier that we had some slight increases in placement. Most of our placements happened at the high school level. Most of the students placed were male students and predominantly ninth-grade students, and that was a pattern that we saw. I'm going to share some demographics for you. I spoke earlier about mandatory placement. 29% of our students who received mandatory placement were African-American, 55% Hispanic, 10% white, and 6% other races. Now, when we look at discretionary placement, the data showed that 64% of African-American students received discretionary placement, 26% Hispanic, 6% white, and 4% other. Looking at our expulsion trends, last year, we had 40 expulsions. We had one elementary student, but that student was placed at the SOS. We had five middle school students and 35 high schoolers who were expelled. The demographic for our expulsions were 20% African-American, 63% Hispanic, 13% white, and 5% other. Now that I've shared the overall district data, Dr. Baker will come back and give some more information, and I'll come back and wrap it up.
Thank you. I promise I'm not all doom and gloom, I'm going to turn it around. So as we reviewed before, these behavioral challenges in schools are multi-layered. Of course, schools are not in a position to support all the challenges that students may be having at each of these layers, we can't directly affect these. However, we can have a positive impact in all of these layers, and so I want to talk for just a second about what Cyfair is doing and can do in each of these layers to confront some of these behavioral challenges. So at the individual level, this is all about positive relationships, positive relationships between students and staff, relationship building, as well as investing in empirically-supported de-escalation in classroom management practices to help maintain, support and maintain those At the family level, engaging in continued parent outreach, this is something that we do very well, and we need to continue to do this, parents' nights, weekend activities at school, working directly with families to provide resources, and the district invests in individuals whose job it is entirely to provide resources to families. Our counselors do it very well, and our youth service specialists, that's their job, and they are, it's impressive how well they do it. Within the school community, each of the schools need procedures and processes for established standardized conflict resolution. They need routines that support consistency and positive interactions, and this does include restorative practices as part of the discipline process. This is not restorative practices in lieu of discipline and consequences. This is restorative practices to support a student's learning so that when consequences have to occur, they have the education and support to move forward with a better choice next time a conflict arises. Within society as a whole, certainly, we can't affect what's going on within the headlines, but what we can do is model positive citizenship for our students, and that can start with digital citizenship. That's where a lot of our students live, is in the digital sphere. Cyfair ISD is starting a strong digital citizenship program, continuing a strong digital citizenship program. We need to teach students how to channel their awareness of current events that are happening into critical thinking, and when we have disagreements as staff, as educators, we can model respectful discourse with others. And then finally, something that we do well is monitoring student progress and adjusting as needed, and that's something that we need to continue to do as we continue to invest in empirically-supported programs. We need to monitor their progress with those programs and how they're doing, and again, make changes as we need to. And with that, back to Dr. Agumike to expand on CFISD supports.
Okay, now, let's talk about some more uplifting things. In CFISD, we have several resources on support for behavior management. Student Services compiles and reports school-level and district-level discipline data every nine weeks. This information is shared to, so campus administrators can analyze and monitor behavioral trends and patterns, just like Dr. Baker shared. Principals and assistant principals are encouraged to use the information to create behavior support and discipline management plans that best fit their respective campuses and the culture, and also adequately train their staff and their students. Now, I'm going to share some things we have in Cyfair for behavior management. First and foremost is our student First and foremost is our Student Code of Conduct and the Student Handbook. These two documents serve as proactive teaching tools for students. As we know, Chapter 37 of the Texas Education Code requires that districts adopt a Student Code of Conduct and approved by you, the school board, every single year. The Student Code of Conduct and the Handbook are available to our community and our district and individual campuses on their respective websites in English and in Spanish. Paper copies are available at every campus upon request. There, in the principal's office, the AP's office, the registrar's office, counselor's office, library, and the reception area. Regarding teaching expected behaviors at school, parents and guardians are our most significant support and partners in educating their students. Therefore, we want them informed about the Student Code of Conduct and Handbook guidelines. So each year, parents and guardians acknowledge receipt of the code and handbook when they complete registration and online annual student update. Parents are encouraged to review and review the code and the handbook with their students. To help our students better understand expectations for behavior, assistant principals hold Code of Conduct presentations for students throughout the year. In addition to the two required presentations in the fall to kick off the new school year and in January for students who register in the spring, APs also ensure that the code is highlighted when new students join our campuses. Now, I'm going to speak about another resource that we have at our schools for our students, PBIS. As you know, PBIS is a research-based, proactive, positive systems approach for creating and maintaining safe and effective learning environments and building that relationship that Dr. Baker spoke of just a few minutes ago. I am thrilled to share that 85 of our comprehensive campuses currently implement the PBIS process. This includes nine of our 12 high schools, all of our 19 middle schools, and all of our 57 elementary schools. And we're very excited. We've already started working with our two new campuses this year, and they're ready to go, and we're very, very excited to support them. So we're going to be adding two more PBIS campuses this year. Another resource is the amazing professional development opportunities that we have for our campus staff. Assistant principals receive yearly training on de-escalation strategies, substance use education, gang awareness training, and much, much more. In 2021, 22, principals were allowed to hire a behavior interventionist. There are 66 BIs in our district, four at the high schools, 13 at the middle school, and 49 at the elementary level. Student Services provides the behavior interventionist's monthly training on classroom management strategies so they can go back to their campuses and be able to support those Level 1, help the teachers, and model so we can support the Level 1 and Level 2 behaviors in the classroom. Also, every year, Student Services offers behavior management training opportunities to the entire district. In 2022, 23, 197 training opportunities were offered to over 9,000 teachers and paraprofessionals. And we still have more resources. I think Dr. Baker mentioned earlier, our counselors, our MHIT team, and our Kaiser workers. We also have four classroom management teachers, four attendance officers, and a dropout specialist for students struggling with behavior and attendance concerns. In 2018, we implemented Clear Backpack on all our secondary campuses. Also, our secondary campuses are equipped with both handheld ones and walkthrough metal detectors. And of course, last but not the least, the amazing support from our CFIR Police Department, whose presence is felt on all our campuses. These are, this is the data from our CFIR Tip Line, a resource that also serves our community. CFIR Tip Line is our district's anonymous reporting system which provides two-way communication between the campus, its students, parents, and community 24 hours a day and seven days a week. The Tip Line allows users to submit tips via the CFISD website, text messaging, and a mobile app to report concerns. Last year, we had over 2,000 tips that were reported. All right, now that we've gone over the support, I'm going to talk about next steps. As Dr. Baker shared, supporting student behavior is complex, and it requires effort from several different areas. For this school year, we're going to continue to improve and expand training on PBIS. We're hopeful that we complete that. But the three campuses, high school campuses that are not PBIS, do use a research-based behavioral program. So we were covered in that area. But we're going to keep refining and making it better. Additionally, we're going to continue training our assistant principals and our BIs using the de-escalation strategies of life-space crisis intervention. This summer, about 90 of our administrators were trained, and the goal is to continue training. And finally, we are going to continue working to implement our well-managed school program. We're going to continue monitoring and evaluating to make sure it's being effective on our campus. This summer, we, seven elementary schools, joined that group of three middle schools that we piloted last year. I cannot say enough about how thankful we are to serve in a community with majority-grade students and parental support. I wanted to bring this presentation in closing to share that the data that we presented this evening represent a small group of our students, and that majority of our students come to school and there do amazing things that we just, you know, it's evident every single day. Less than 7% of our 118,000-plus students received OSS, which means that 93% of our students never received OSS. They were in school. Placements were less than 2% to the DAEP. On the flip side, means about 98% of our students were never placed at the DAEP. And finally, JJAEAP, 0.03%. And that's 40 students out of 118 students. So I wanted to close on that positive. We're very happy to support our kiddos. Our campus staff, our APs do an amazing job. This brings me to the end of my presentation. I want to use this opportunity. I think I have two team members here, Stacy and Adri. Two of the directors in Student Services and, of course, our team that, you know, supports us. So I thank you so much for your time, and this is the end of our presentation.
Thank you for your presentation. Let me see if my board members, colleagues have questions or comments. Let me go to my right, Scott.
I know it's hard to see me. Just a quick question, and thank you for the presentation. I won't obviate on that. Question I get a lot of times from constituents is on consent for treatment. I know our board policy, FFEB, talks about that. Before we do any treatment, as far as counseling treatment, as far as psychological treatment, examination, testing, things like that, we have to get parents' permission. Is that correct? Unless it's under a couple of exceptions.
Sure, yes.
That's all mine?
Yes, we do, yes. So psychologists, under their license, can't provide psychological treatment or psychological assessment without parent consent.
Thank you very much.
Gilbert.
Thank you, Dr. Agumake. Quite thorough and yet forthcoming with what the doctor has said about a national trend. But the solutions we have in place, hopefully, we have plateaued and we can come back down from the significant increase of the post-pandemic because the numbers were significantly worrisome for everyone at that point. And also, when we visited other members throughout our conferences, it was ongoing everywhere and stuff. So hopefully, we have plateaued, and thank you for your and your team's work and hopefully getting us back on board where we need to be at. But the numbers should trend finally to the positive side.
We believe that, too. Think we're kind of moving in the right direction.
Exactly. Thank you, Dr.
Looking to my left, Lucas. Oh, yeah, Natalie is on the screen. Natalie.
Thanks, Tom. I know it's difficult to manage. I did have a question on the three high schools that were using a different behavior management system. If they were showing more positive data, if they're similar as far as their demographics and stuff?
And we can certainly present that information to you, but we haven't noticed any significant difference. So I would, you know, venture to say yes, that they're aligned with all the other high schools.
Thank you.
Did she mean middle schools?
No, she meant three high schools. All our middle schools at PBIS, we only had three high schools.
Got it.
That don't use them.
Thank you. I did wonder if there was anything significant and how that looked so that we could learn from anything different. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, to my left.
Mr. President Jackson, thank you both, doctors, and the departments for your service and help to our kiddos. Very much appreciated. Question on the well-managed schools. So we piloted a program, to my understanding, this last year at three middle schools. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Three middle schools, and then we added, we trained seven more elementary schools.
Okay. Is there any findings that's specific to what your goals were at the outset of the program and what the findings were during and at the end of the program?
Since we piloted the first year, we've been working with the principals of the middle schools. And what we, the goal is to provide teachers. It's about providing teachers the skills to be able to respond to those Level 1, Level 2 behaviors in the classroom. So that's the goal across the board. And we're working with those principals. We've seen some positive things. We've received positive feedback from principals, and we're going to continue to evaluate, which is why we slowed down the implementation. And we're going to continue working with the principals to see what kind of progress and receive feedback from them. So we'll have that this year.
Very good. I'd be excited to hear that, you know, throughout the year, maybe a couple of times, if not quarterly, somewhere in there.
Debbie.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Agumake. Really good, insightful presentation. And just a couple of things, so bear with me. I've got notes on different pages. But it occurred to me, you know, when we looked at the middle school numbers of in-school suspension from the 2018, 19 school year to the 2022, 2023 school year, and for high school as well, it increased with middle schools about 3,000 and, what, about 3,400 for high schools. My thought is, what is the difference in, what was the difference in the student population in the 2018, 2019 school year compared to the 2022, 23 school year? In other words, were there a lower number of students total in those beginning years than here in the final school year we just completed?
Without looking at data here, I would assume yes, that we have some growth.
Because I'm just kind of feeling, assuming that maybe that's why the increase.
Yes.
Okay. Let me find my next notes.
And also returning from the pandemic, we took a hard line.
And it's understandable why that 2020, 2021 school year was so less drastic, I guess we could say. Okay. Why do you think current year numbers are smaller than previous year here on the Tip Line report, the CFIR Tip Line report? Because it shows that it dropped, not significantly, but for the middle school, it dropped about 220 reports. And it just struck me as kind of odd that this last year, that there'd be less tips than the year previous. Any ideas?
That's really where we trend with the Tip Line. And that number showed us that there were so many things on the campus. The students have relationships with the administrators, where they can go to the administrators to speak to them and report things rather than do it. So that's, yes. So there's a, we believe that's the key to that.
Okay, that would make sense. Okay. Well, thank you again for a great report.
Julie.
Thank you, Dr. Agumake and Dr. Baker. What's helpful is that we're looking at data over a five-year period so that we can look for trends. So that's very beneficial. I appreciate that. You mentioned that some of the increases to disciplinary action was due to changes in laws that affected mandatory placements. Can you explain that a little bit?
Well, it was, we've had some changes with THC placement and drug placement.
Okay.
So, yes. Placements that we typically expelled for previously, some of them were being placed at the DAEP. So those became, and this year also, there's another law, HB 114, that we're currently training our administrators on. And that also will impact some placement numbers with a...
I'm trying to remember that one. Is that if a student caught with vaping?
Yes, ma'am.
Materials, that they are, it's a mandatory placement?
Placement, yes. And we're working through that to develop a plan and also communicate with our community what those changes are.
That's exactly what I was thinking. I think it's very important that parents understand that if their children come to school or they are in possession of vaping an apparatus, even part of it, that they will be...
There is a consequence.
There is a consequence, and they will be placed at the ALCs.
And we're working through that. We've, we met with our APs. We're going to meet with our principals just to talk about what that looks like and how to communicate. We're working with our communications department to put some message in out there so our parents are well-educated about this change and the implications.
Maybe even having some of the students make videos and share that with their peers. That may catch students' attention even more so. Will it be addressed in the Student Handbook as well?
It will be addressed in the Code of Conduct.
In the Code of Conduct, yes.
It is, it is a change, proposed change in our code.
Yes. So that means it will be communicated to students then when they have their Code of Conduct?
It will be.
Sessions at school.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I will say that oftentimes, as parents, you know, we don't read the Code of Conduct or read the Student Handbook until we're in a situation where we need to know it. So it's important that we continue to reinforce that those are important documents for our parents and students to know. Okay, I have a question regarding key findings under expulsions and ALC placements. When we look at demographics for expulsions, if you look at the expulsions by race, they're very close to marrying our student population, our student demographics. But when we look at ALC and under discretionary placements, there is disproportionality. So how is, how are we going to be addressing that?
I think Dr. Baker spoke a little bit about that. That was one of the areas that we had started addressing prior to the pandemic. And we're going back again now that things are settling down to educate our administrators. And, you know, we're not saying not to discipline students, but we want to make sure that we're applying discipline, you know, across the board in the same way.
Yes, okay, thank you. That's exactly what I was looking for. I appreciate Dr. Baker explaining that restorative practices are not in lieu of consequences, but that they're actually in addition to consequences. but that they're actually in addition to consequences. So that behavior can be, tools can be given, a strategy shared with students so that it will modify their behavior moving forward. So they don't repeat. Yeah, that was very helpful. Thank you for sharing that. I think also, there's a connection on that page. We were talking about the solutions, individual, family, community, society, and effects over time. I was connecting that with what you opened with, was that nationally, there was this concern about students not attending school due to safety concerns. So I think if we can, we look at these solutions holistically, we can address that concern with safety. It's not just about discipline. It's also about safety is what I'm trying to say.
No, absolutely. It absolutely is. And back to Ms. Mike, share the question that you asked about the tip line and then Dr. Ogum gave his response, that developing those relationships with administrators leads to a safer sense of, sense within the campus.
Absolutely, absolutely. Our 66 behavior interventionists, those were paid for using ESTER funds, which we know we are now out of. ESTERed out, is that a word?
Yeah.
So maybe in preparation for next year's budget, we look at the benefits of those behavior interventionists. We look at feedback from principals of the value. And if we are going to have to look at making trade-offs on if we can continue to have those positions or not, we maybe need some data around that to help us make that decision for next year's budget. Okay. All right. Okay, my last question is for both of you because we deal with policy. Are there any recommendations you have for us as a board on either changes in policy or how policy is implemented to address these concerns?
You want to speak?
No, please, go ahead.
You can say no. I just, if there's something we can do from a policy standpoint to support your efforts.
I think you, based on what was discussed at the last board meeting, we're on the right track. And we have some initiatives that we've presented that you've allowed us to pilot. And we're going to give you some feedback. And I think we're moving in the right direction.
Okay. So really, now we're just looking at the implementation of the policies and then measuring them and ensuring that they're as effective as possible.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
First, let me say, very solid work, very thorough. I do appreciate the trends, looking both nationally as well as bringing it down from a local perspective. The first question is, have we experienced the national trends here locally? I.e., do we see, what we see nationally, is that also reflective of the community?
Anecdotally, yes. You know, that we aren't capturing all the numbers that they're capturing on a national basis with regard to those trends. But certainly anecdotally, the, you know, the increase in THC vaping, we've seen an explosion of that within the community and within the Houston area broadly. You know, and certainly, the mental health trends have not been trending necessarily positively in the way that we would like within the Houston area, similar to the national scale, so, yes.
Thank you. Always important to make that distinction.
Yeah, thank you.
I do want to repeat something. Julie already mentioned it, but it needs to be repeated. We have restorative practices, right? Is that in lieu of discipline or is that in addition to discipline?
They are, it's two sides of the same coin. It's, they, consequences and teaching new behaviors are both part of behavior change.
You know, I think that often in the community, as parents, we see perhaps restorative practices and we don't see the discipline unless it happens to our child. And if it happens to our child, I think we see the discipline, but not necessarily the restorative practices. But it's important to know that they are there and available for all children, all students.
Mr. Jackson, when we train our assistant principals, we tell them that the consequence is the consequence, but how you deliver the consequence is the restorative aspect of it. How you deliver the consequence in a way that you maintain relationship so that student has a way to come back and repair some of the, you know, the hurt that they caused other students. So the consequence is still there, but we deliver in a respective way and a relationship-based way.
And it is all about learning. We know that, not just in our district, but truly across the nation. Back when we were part of NASB and I visited with trustees from across the nation, they all felt that because of COVID, students lost the understanding of proper behavior in classroom, and certainly true in our district, but in every other district. Do we see recovery of that? Are the students back from a behavior perspective? Are they back to where they were before COVID? Are they still learning and growing?
I think we're all still learning and growing. But I believe that we've seen significant improvement in our students based on feedback from our principals and our assistant principals when we're on campus. We still, you know, even prior to COVID, that we still, we had students who struggled with behavior. And that's going to be, that's just part of, you know, what we do. But the intensity of the behavior right after we return, that seems to be tapering off. And we're seeing some good improvement.
Good. That's a, that is a key point. I know when our students came back from COVID, there was considerable learning that needed to take place. And it's good that they have made significant progress in that regard. Let me return back to vaping. Most of it's already been covered and answered, but I do want to emphasize part of it. First, I want to applaud this board and the predecessors. So my running mate made a point of vaping 12 years ago, that it was part of a campaign that she ran on. The district heard her and put vaping into the student code of conduct. So it's not just now coming in. It's been there for a long time. But the new law is now significant. I always want to know how big is big and how small is small? So this new law that says if somebody is caught, e-cigarette vaping device, they go to the equivalent of ALC. Will that swamp our ALCs? I know that immediately after COVID, we were running at full capacity and turning away those who wanted to be there, so to speak.
Well, when we look at the data, we had, last year, we had about 1,200 incidents of E-CIGs. And when, you know, those would be situations now that a conversation about a placement, a mandatory action will have to happen. So we're having conversations. The law also says that if we have students at the DAEP who have committed more egregious violations and there is no space at the DAEP, that we can have an alternative placement on campus. So we have, it's a very, this new requirement is one that we have to work collaboratively with our campus staff to figure out what we're, how we're going to meet that mandate as a district.
The next question is really for our parents. So when one of our students has the opportunity to go to ALC, it says they don't get to play football while they're at ALC. They don't get to play a band instrument. They don't get to sing in a choir. They don't get to do any co or extracurricular activities. Is my understanding of that correct?
Yes, sir.
And so if a student brings any type of vaping device on campus and they are found with it, then that means they suffer those same consequences. Doesn't matter if they're the quarterback of the football team or the head cheerleader or the all-state trumpet player or the honor student, the same thing will happen. They will lose the privileges that otherwise they would have earned.
Absolutely. Just as the student who is an ALC would have lost theirs, the student who receives a consequence for that would lose access to those opportunities also during the term of their placement.
While we're talking about this, I do want the viewing audience to know that every member of your board has gone to JJ. We all have toured ALC. Most of us gave a full day in the effort. We all gave at least four or five hours in doing that to better understand the situation. I know that, and this is probably my third or fourth tour of JJ, at one of the tours, the lead administrator mentioned that we would prefer that students not go to JJ because they have the opportunity to learn from other students who are there for perhaps very serious requirements because that mandatory placements are very serious. And I would say to parents, on the question of vaping, try and encourage your students not to bring those vaping devices to school because if they do and they wind up at ALC, they may have the opportunity to be introduced to other behaviors that you may not want your child to be introduced to. I don't know that that's true. I know that we were told that at JJ. And the question of vaping is significant. So I do appreciate that we're looking, that the law does permit alternative action to take place, but the penalties still remain, right?
Yes, sir. The penalty during the term of the consequence will be the same. So they, you know, lose privileges and will not be able to participate in those things during the term of their consequence.
So basically, zero tolerance has come back. Our predecessors on this board, I guess 15, 18 years ago, adopted zero tolerance on discipline, which was very popular among the community until it happened to their child. And when it happened to their child, and certainly while I was on the board, I know that state officials were contacted being concerned about zero tolerance. But this is, in fact, legal zero tolerance, not a board action.
Well.
It's the law, right?
Mr. Jackson, we're also, even with any consequence that removes students from school, we're required to look at mitigating factors before issuing a consequence. That would be for out-of-school suspension, DAEP placement, and expulsions. And so we always consider that situation and that incident with the filters. So that's, yes.
Julie touched on an important legal question as we look at comparisons across subpop groups. With, I don't know that as a board, we need to see it, but within your department, do you make comparisons of our district to other districts to see what the norms are like?
We don't make comparisons to other districts, but we look at national trends. We look at national data and compare what we look like to what's going on globally. That actually is what my research was on.
Well, the point is, I always like to, we have to look internally, but I think we also have to look externally. We always need to have some type of external comparison. I do have a sensitive question related to all of this data. I will probably ask that offline, but it will be, it will be asked. A basic question here that I think is also very important. Correlation, is there a correlation between disciplinary action and academic attainment, both for the child, but also in a group setting?
Mr. Jackson, for some time, we have, and that's part of why we partnered with Hanover, to take a deeper look into not just the discipline and academic attainment, but also attendance. So that's one of our goals, to look at, to see how all those play together. So that's one goal that we have.
Excellent, thank you. And then the last question, a minor point. We did bring up the fact that we do have metal detectors. Are these mobile?
On the high schools, yes, we do have, I'm going to go back on my memory as a principal. I would say, yes, that they can be moved. We also have the handheld ones, and we have the metal detectors that can be moved around. I believe so is chief. There, there, chief gives me a thumbs up. Yes, so they are.
Excellent. You know, that's an important piece of information for our community to understand. We do believe in the layered approach for safety, but we also believe in a layered approach for student discipline. Thank you for your report. Very good, very solid report. Other questions, comments? And Natalie, I apologize. I saw the screen up there. I never realized that was you. So do you have other comments or questions before we leave this topic?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Tom.
Okay, very good. Item 3C, the administration will provide a written report on the 2020-2023 District Safety and Security Audit Report. This item may be discussed in closed session pursuant to Section 551.076 of the Texas Government Code. We have questions only this evening? Do we have a brief presentation? No. Questions only, looking to my right. Looking to my left.
We are going into closed session? Okay, I have, I emailed you a list of questions. Oh, okay, great, thank you.
The board will now review the following action items. During the review of the following action items, any board member may remove one or more of these items, at which time, these items will be addressed and voted on individually. For A, the board will consider approving the minutes of the June 20, 2023 regular board meeting. There are no speakers on the topic. May we move this to the consent agenda?
Yes.
So moved. For B, the board will consider nominations for the Region 4, Position F, large district member seat on the TASB Board of Directors. Does anybody wish to be nominated for this position? Natalie, I can't see if you're shaking your head or raising your hand.
Yeah, no, I'm not interested in a nomination. Thank you.
Okay, very good. There is no interest. Item 4C, the board will consider approving board members to serve as delegate and alternate delegates to the 2023 Texas Association of School Boards Annual Delegate Assembly. Our current delegate is Natalie. Do you wish to continue in this role, Natalie?
No, Tom, I do not wish to continue in the role.
Okay. So I presume you are resigning as delegate?
Yes, Tom, that's true.
So we have an open position for delegate? Is there any interest on the board?
Tom, I would just mention, just to my colleagues, last year, both Natalie and I served as delegates to the Delegate Assembly. And it's where representatives of the 1,025 independent school districts in Texas elect their representatives, all of the representatives to the Board of the Texas Association of School Boards. But also, they vote on the advocacy agenda. So it's a really interesting process. It's really how you, it's our voice to, for what will be advocated on our behaves at the state level. So I'd encourage my colleagues, I mean, I've done it before, but I would encourage someone who hasn't done it before to participate. It's a few hours on a Saturday, and it's a, it's a great. to participate. It's a few hours on a Saturday, and it's a, it's a great way to represent our board at the state level.
Well said. I have served as a delegate as well. So if anybody has an interest serving as a delegate, please let me know prior to next Monday. Or if you have an interest now, let me know.
Was there a certain time that we had to have a name in there, Julie?
So, so we will, so for the delegate, we would need to vote on the delegate by Monday. That's the action time. So Holly, we will leave that separate. Item 4D, the board will consider the endorsement of candidacy for Region 4, Position A, Rose Avalos, Marquee Holmes, Doug James. Position B, Darlene Brohm. Position D, Angela Lemon Flowers. And Position G, Kristen Davison Malone. So for Position D, B, D, and G, these individuals are by themselves in requesting endorsement. And then we have a choice if we care to make it for Position A. So it's open for discussion from anybody? Julie?
Thank you, sir. So I would say too, there's also Position, I want to say it's Position F, is also, it's vacant, which is our position. So those ones that have no opposition, those are seats that are guaranteed by that school district, that board, to have a seat on the Board of the Texas Association of School Boards due to the size of their district. So we are guaranteed a seat on the Board. It's about 40 people that represent, again, all 1,025 school districts across Texas. So the reason why Position A has multiple people is that that, those districts that are part of that Position A do not have a guaranteed seat like we do. In terms of those folks, I know two of the three, two of the three, Rose Avalos has served for many years, and Doug James, I know, is from the Klein Independent School District. I don't know that he has served on the Tasby Board before. I would feel good about either one of those names, but I'd be interested in what my colleagues have to say as well, before I make a vote.
You know, I would, I would echo your comments. Rose has always done a very fine job as well. And I do know Doug James. I think he would be good in that, in that position. Sometimes it's good to have somebody new in a position as well, but sometimes it's good to have somebody who has an experienced voice. Other comments? Okay. Then I would entertain a motion, and remember, we don't have to do this, but I would entertain a motion if somebody cares to make it, to endorse a candidacy for Region 4, Position A.
Will we do that on Monday?
We will do this on Monday.
Oh, okay.
So if anybody cares to have that as a motion, let's be prepared on Monday. Okay. 4E, the board will consider approving an election order calling for an election on Tuesday, November 7th, 2023, for Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Trustees, Positions 1, 2, 3, and 4. We have one speaker on this topic this evening, Frances Romero. Before you start, the ground rules are, you will have a light that comes on to let you know that you have 15 seconds to wrap up. Mr. Secretary, are you ready? Almost?
Yeah, we're ready.
Okay, we're ready. Proceed when you wish.
Good evening, President Jackson, members of the board, Dr. Henry, and staff. I'm Frances Romero, Vice Chair of the District's Community Leadership Committee. I'm here today to speak on Agenda Item 4E. It is very important, in fact, critical, that citizens in our community get involved and engaged in this year's school board election. The 2021 school board election turnout was only a meager 11%. With a student population of over 118,000 students and a staff of over 8,000, we must increase our voter turnout this time around. I encourage members in our community, and as President Jackson would say, those in the viewing audience, to participate in this year's school board election by doing three things. First, research the candidates to truly know who has the best interest of all of our students, teachers, and staff. Second, attend at least one candidate forum to hear the candidates express their views on the issues facing SciFair ISD. And last, and most importantly, get out and vote. Election Day is on November 7th, and once this agenda item is passed, everyone in our community will have the opportunity to decide the makeup of our school board over the next four years for Positions 1 through 4. We hold the power of the ballot. Let's use it. Thank you.
Teresa, do we have a presentation on this this evening? Questions only. To my right, to my left. Do we want to put this on the consent agenda? So if you would, Holly. 4F, the board will consider approving the agreement for the purchase of attendance credits, netting Chapter 48 funding for the 2023-2024 school year and delegating contractual authority to obligate the school district under Texas Education Code, TEC 11.1511(c)(4), to the superintendent. And sadly, there are no speakers on this topic this evening. I cannot imagine a more scintillating topic for the community to talk about. We do have a presentation, I believe. Karen? Questions only. We do have information that was contained in the board book. So let me look to my left this time. Lucas, any questions, comments? Debbie?
Yeah.
Julie? Natalie? Are you there? I guess no, no questions or comments from Natalie.
Tom, can you repeat that?
Okay. Item 4F, the board will consider approving the agreement for the purchase of attendance credits, netting Chapter 48 funding for the 2023-2024 school year and delegating contractual authority to obligate the school district under Texas Education Code, TEC 11.1511(c)(4), to the superintendent. This material was in our board book. And so I wanted to know, did you have a question or a comment?
No, no questions or comments. Thank you.
I did have offline questions that I asked to address this. And this is a interesting nuance. Karen, can you give us a four-minute over, or four-sentence overview of this?
Four sentences.
Four sentences. That may be difficult, but it will be, it will be brief.
Okay, so, so let me ask the questions that I want to listen.
Okay.
So the old law, about four years ago, you were either a 41 or a 42.
That's correct.
Now you're either a 48 or a 49.
Correct.
A property-rich district is a 49.
Is a 49, correct.
Okay. Now, if you're a 49, you have two tests. You have a Tier 1 test and a Tier 2 test.
That is correct.
For the Tier, Tier 1 test, if you fall into category, it requires you basically to pay a penalty, my words, not the law. That does not apply to us. Tier 2, there's another mathematical test that's applied that does not apply to us either. So even though we are considered a rich property district, we are not in any form of recapture.
That's correct. We don't owe any recapture at this point.
However, the law requires us to take a step as saying that we have to take an action as if we were recaptured.
That is correct.
So the action we are taking is as if we were a recaptured district, even though we do not have any financial recapture.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Those were the points I wanted the viewing audience to understand, but it also came up when we visited Senator Betancourt's office. So they knew we were a 49, but they weren't quite certain if, and they knew we were subject to the law on recapture, but they weren't certain if we had to financially provide funds back to the state. So, so it's very complicated, but it is important for us to understand where we are on this. Now, for this, Karen, are you satisfied that, that the motion, that it's fine to move this to consent agenda, or does this have to stand alone? Because I know we have an option. We have to select.
I may ask, defer to Marnie if she, I mean, I, I'm fine with it being consent, but I honestly, since there's, they have to approve the purchase of the attendance credits, I'm not sure they can move that to consent.
Right. That's what the motion is, and if it's on the consent agenda, it's the consent to all the motions.
Okay.
There's nothing, and we're not actually buying any attendance credits, so.
You are correct. You are correct.
Okay, so, so may we move this to the consent agenda? Please, Holly. 4G, the board will consider a resolution approving the individual authorized to calculate the no new revenue tax rate, the voter approval tax rate, and other truth and taxation requirements. There are no speakers on this topic this evening. Karen is available for questions. Let me look to my left. Questions, comments? To my right, none. May we move this to the consent agenda? And Natalie, I'm sorry, but, but I didn't, they don't show me your television screen, so I presume that you had no questions or comments?
Yes, no questions or comments, and yes to the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. So maybe I need to have a tiny little monitor here, so I can see.
Hopefully, I'll never have to be on the screen again. You can just do it right there in person. I do apologize.
Well, everybody has reasons to dismiss from time to time, and I know to my left, we've had three that have been on the screens. Maybe I'll be on the screen soon. If we go to Item 4H, 4G has been moved to consent agenda, Holly. 4H, the board will consider approving the memorandum of understanding with the University of Texas Health Science Center of Houston for the provision and administration of telemedicine services associated with Texas Child Health Access through telemedicine, TC8ATT, component of the Texas Children's Mental Healthcare Consortium, TCMHC. Once again, questions only. We did have material on this in our board book. Any questions?
I do have a question if Mr. Sampson can come down. Why?
Well, Mark, I think you're right. It's not easy to sit in those seats without moving a little bit.
Mr. Sampson, thank you for all the background information that you shared with the board prior to the meeting. It was very helpful, and this is something that is new for our district. Is that correct? That we've not had this before? Oh, sorry. It is about the memorandum of understanding with UT Health Science Center for the T Chat service?
I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. It's not new. It's our second time renewing. Yes, ma'am. We've had it since COVID took place.
Okay.
And it's been a great benefit for our students.
Good, good. And just to confirm that, parents must give approval before the service is accessible by students. Is that correct?
Prior to any student receiving any services from the licensed professionals, they are required to submit on the online portal, consent that the parent has been notified.
Okay, okay, good. How many students have we had participate in the past with the service?
Since we started this opportunity for students, in between 1,400 and 1,500 students.
Wow, I had no idea. That's fantastic. I appreciate that we're offering this, because I think it's a great way of, you know, we talked about earlier with Dr. Baker, the access to mental health services is something that we struggle with in Texas. So this is really bridging that gap for parents. It kind of starts the process for them in a safe place. And then my understanding is those visits are limited, the telehealth visits are limited to four visits within two months, and then the student is transferred, hopefully, to a long care, long-term provider.
Correct. And that's how this program came about, because there was a delay in individuals seeking out appointments, and this, this opportunity was provided. So in the interim, they would be able to have continued services and hopefully refer out if need be.
That's fantastic. You know, I was, it just popped in my mind, too. I hadn't thought until now, that it also removes that barrier that, you know, parents having to take off work and go get their kiddo and then take their child to a provider for an assessment. It can be done while they're on campus, and that would, that helps the parent as well.
Consent can be done while on campus, but for the actual services, those are offered after school hours.
Oh, I thought the actual services were during school hours. It's just the...
The actual notification to the parents, and of course, the students and parents can set up the appointments during school hours, but the actual therapeutic sessions do not take place during the regular hours, and they're all virtual.
There, I knew, yeah, I knew they were all virtual, but they're after school hours or on the weekends. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
No problem.
May we move that to the consent agenda?
Yes.
4I, the board will consider renewing the agreement with Lone Star College to facilitate the training for certified nursing assistants, CNA certification for practicum in health science students. There are no speakers on this item. Once again, questions only. Questions, looking to my right, to my left. May we move this to the consent agenda? Holly, so moved. 4J, the board will consider the adoption of non-business days for calendar years 2023 and 2024 for the Texas Public Information Act calendar. No speakers on this topic. Any questions? Looking to my left, looking to my right. Marnie, for the benefit of the viewing audience, I didn't mean to wake you up. I apologize. What is a non-business day for a school board, our school system, rather?
So, a new bill passed, and it's just attempting to make non-business days under the Texas Public Information Act more uniform across the state. And so now there are designated non-business days under the Texas Public Information Act. And the, and the reason that's important is that the time period in which public entities provide information or go to the Attorney General to get permission to withhold information that's required to be confidential under the law is within 10 business days. And so it's an attempt to kind of make that more uniform, because previously, the Attorney General advised public entities that non-business days were any day that the business was closed or on skeleton staff. And so, of course, that varied according to the public entity. So there was a decision at the state level to make that more uniform, however, recognizing that different public entities have different calendars, like school districts. And so you can designate up to 10 non-business days each year, calendar year, not school year. So that's why we are designating them for the remainder of 2023 and then 2024. For us, we rarely need, you know, the full-time, sometimes bigger requests, you may need the full-time. But for us, sometimes it's the access to departments or campuses to get information when the district is closed. So you'll note in there typically winter break, spring break, or Thanksgiving break are the times that we'll designate, because it's just difficult to get documents from departments, et cetera, when, when no one is there. Even though we have Fridays off during the summer, we rarely had any problems anyway, so that's why there's no summer dates designated. But I will say, we are closed more than just 10 days, so we'll have to, you know, just every year, look at the calendar and be thoughtful about those days.
All of that was well spelled out in the handout, but I did wonder... But I did wonder, knowing that we're closed on Fridays during the summer, that somehow only having ten non-business days for a school system did not seem to be quite appropriate.
Yes, and the winter break, if you'll notice, you know, this coming year, we do have to kind of decide. Campuses aren't back, but central office staff are back. So we'll just have to be mindful. And if we do need additional time, then we can make certifications under the act. So we'll just have to, Janet Ward, the paralegal for the district, she really manages that process and does an amazing job. And so she will make sure that we stay on top of that no matter, you know, what days there are. So we'll take care of it. But you're right, for school districts, it's not quite enough. But thank you.
Very good. Thank you. May we move this to consent agenda? Holly. Four K, the Board will consider approving on first reading additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies. There are no speakers on this topic this evening. There are two parts to it. One, CKC local safety programs, risk management, emergency plans revise. Two, CPC local office management, records management revise. Questions? Looking to my right?
Can we just explain what this is?
I'm sorry?
Can we just explain what this is? There's not much detail here.
So that would be Teresa? Either you or Marnie for item four K.
CKC, is that the policy? There are two policies.
Yes, so CKC and CPC.
CKC, both of the policies that we're bringing forward tonight are just TASP recommendations to update some minor language within the policies. For CKC, safety programs, that is just the inclusion of a hazard such as a train derailment to be included in the emergency operation plan. And then for CPC, we're just clarifying the records manager using a consistent title as record manager versus a specific title within our district, such as the Director of General Administration. So there are very minor tweaks and changes. I'm not sure why the red lines are not included there.
So they were in the board book when I went through it?
Yeah, I'm looking at it here, and I don't see those.
Yeah, I don't see them.
I think, Mr. Henry, they were there, and then they disappeared. So you are right, there's not the detailed backup. Since this is first reading, we'll have those. Make certain they're there by Monday, but this is just the first reading. So you're not going to be voting on those. So I apologize for that. I'm not sure.
Since information's not there, I'm going to not put this on the consent agenda. We'll leave it separate. But when I looked at it earlier today, it was there because I found it interesting that we had to take into account the train derailment. But there may be some glitch. We'll figure it out. Item four L, the Board will consider approving on dual reading additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies. We have two on here. There are no speakers on this topic this evening. Item one, FFAC local wellness and health services medical treatment revise. Two, EFB local instructional resources library materials revise.
So FFAC, and we will get the red line to you, but I believe Ms. Hood is here with us. If you had, yes, there she is. Our fabulous director of nursing. But she and I, but we actually started working on this before the law was passed. But the revisions are to address primarily the change in the law to provide for the opioid antagonist distribution and implementation of that program in our district. And if you have any questions, we can answer those for you. But it's to implement the law and to, we have training already. Christina Cole stepped right in, and she and Melinda have, everybody lined up to be trained, and we'll be ready on day one to be compliant with that new law. And that's why we are asking for a dual reading on FFAC. And we'll get you a hard copy of the red line to have at your place on Monday. That way, you can really look at it before you vote. And if you have any questions about that prior to Monday, we are here. Or if you have any questions, Melinda's here.
Marnie, I would note on EFB, so what was in the board book? You had that purple draft stamped horizontally, and it was difficult to read the red underline under that purple stamp. If y'all could tweak it and maybe just move draft up, like in the header or footer. I mean, I was able to get through it, but it was certainly challenging.
Yes, and I actually took draft off, I realized, when the color, and printed copies for you, but left them on my desk. So after we finished the presentation, I will get those and bring those. I'll walk up and get them and bring them down to you because I do agree when I saw it on the online that it was hard to read. So I took it off for you guys to have a copy. And then we are actually going to walk you through and talk to you about those and then answer up those changes. Linda's going to start with that and answer any questions that you have.
So will that be tonight, or will that be Monday?
That's right now.
Right now.
Okay.
Good evening.
It's showtime.
Yes, it is. Good evening, President Jackson, board members, and Dr. Henry. We want to thank you for the opportunity to share with you the work of the district's Library Materials Committee and also share with you the proposal for revisions to EFB local. Now, you may, I don't have a clicker. Is there a clicker down there? I just realized I don't have a clicker. Thank you.
Leslie the magician.
So you may recall, in the spring, we shared with you that we were assembling a district library committee. And then the facilities for that committee were going to be and have been myself and Marnie. And then we have two coordinators who are part of that, leading that committee, and that's Dr. Heather Bergman, our curriculum and instruction assistant superintendent, and Jennifer Garteski, our district librarian. Garteski, what did I say?
Garsteki.
Garsteki, sorry, sorry. Marnie's correcting me over here. Our district librarian. And then the charge for this committee was to review the actual policy, EFB local, the library materials, and to also determine whether there were modifications needed to this policy, to the current policy, and then help us with forming a recommendation to bring to you so that you would consider as approving EFB local. Now, for this committee, we actually followed the district process that we've been following for forming committees. So it was an application process. And so on the district website, under committee, our community, our stakeholders were able to go there and click on the icon and be able to see what the charge of the committee is and the membership. And they were able to apply to be a part of the committee. This is just a larger look at the different areas that were represented in the committee. And I will tell you that this group did a fabulous job with working through the committee. They were very dedicated and committed. Each time that we met, which I'll share in a little bit, they were there for a couple of hours. And even the last meeting we had, I think they were there for almost three hours. Almost three hours. Well, we had a huge interest in this committee. We had right around eight hundred stakeholders who expressed interest in serving in the committee. And Marnie and I thought it was because we were facilitating it. We're sure that was it, but eight hundred. And so we were very excited that we had that many, that much interest in this committee. And so we took all of the applications and we separated them into each of the different categories. And then we lined up every member under each of the feeder patterns. We wanted to make sure that we had representation from each of the feeder patterns. And so like, for example, for parents and librarians, we had twelve that were represented, one from each feeder pattern. And then once we did that, then we did a randomization so that it was very fair with which parents were selected beyond the committee or which librarians would like to be in the committee. And so we randomized the list, and then we kept that list so we would have all these alternates. So which really came in handy because when we started calling and inviting the people that were selected based on the randomization, some of them were not able to serve for whatever reason. And so we were able to go to the next one, to the next one. Very systematic and fair. And so then, and if there was, if there happened to be a vacancy for one of the feeder patterns, then we did make contact with the schools' not feeder pattern to make sure that we did have representation. So the committee in their work, as I said, their charge was to provide input on any modifications that were needed. And so the first thing that we did with the committee was we shared our current policy. And so they really had time to dig into the current policy and the current regs and be able to provide that clear input. I think I forgot a, did I forget a slide? There's a slide missing there. They were able to provide just very clear input. We've actually, we actually have had four meetings with them. We had one on May ninth, May sixteenth, June first. So all of these were prior to House Bill nine hundred becoming a law. And then we had a meeting with them on July twenty-fifth. And that was after the bill had become a law. And then we're going to have one additional meeting because we start some discussion to do on the regulations that go with a policy. They're going to give us more input and suggestions on how we implement. What does it look like to actually implement the policy? But they had time to share and discuss all the processes that we have in place. They were able to look at our current practice for collections, for adding them, and also for the reconsideration for the challenges. As we were going through different committees or meetings, we reviewed with them what the bill was saying because it wasn't a law yet. And then we collect a lot of feedback from them. They did gallery walks. So these pictures that you're seeing kind of give you, kind of give you an idea of the different ways that they participated and how we gathered information. There were gallery walks. They did a lot of post-its. They did table discussions. They worked in whole groups, and then they would share. They had some feedback cards at their table in case they just didn't want to share out loud. And then Jennifer also had an opportunity for them to give feedback electronically. And then we would take all that feedback, and Dr. Claiborne's office analyzed all that feedback and provided that for us. And then we would share with them the next meeting we had regarding what the feedback was indicating. And then that last meeting, as I said, that we had, the twenty-fifth, by that time, House Bill nine hundred was now a law. So they were able to really dig into that and then be able to apply that to what recommendations they had for the policy. And then, as I said, we have another meeting that we're going to be setting up so that we can really work on those regulations. So I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer, and she's going to actually walk and give you a summary of House Bill nine hundred.
Okay, so over the summer, actually on June thirteenth of twenty twenty-three, Governor Abbott signed House Bill nine hundred, which is also known as the Reader Act. Reader is an acronym, and it stands for Restricting Explicit and Adult Designated Educational Resources. And at this time, I'd like to share the highlights of the Reader Act, of the Reader Act, which impact our EFB policy and practices of the Cyfair I S D libraries. Okay, which one did I push? Nope, that's the pointer.
Click the green one.
There we go. Nope, that's the one. That's the, sorry.
The big green button.
I did.
The top, the big green.
Oh, the big green button. There we go. All right, here we go. So the Reader Act, it is effective for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. It requires the Texas State Library and Archives Commission to adopt mandatory standards for school library collection development, or basically how librarians assess, select, and deselect library books and materials. These new standards must have a majority approval of the State Board of Education, and they'll be reviewed and updated every five years. The mandatory standards are required to prohibit the possession, acquisition, and purchase of harmful material, material rated as sexually explicit, material that is pervasively vulgar, or educationally unsuitable material. The mandatory standards also prohibit removing material from a collection solely based on the ideas contained within the material or the personal background of the author or the characters within the book. Furthermore, the Reader Act requires entities that sell library materials to Texas public schools to evaluate the content and apply ratings of sexually explicit or sexually relevant to materials that meet these definitions. Additionally, the Reader Act prohibits vendors from selling any books to a district before issuing ratings related to sexually relevant and sexually explicit materials previously sold to schools. And it prohibits the vendors from selling books rated sexually explicit to public schools. The Act requires the vendor to issue recalls for any books rated sexually explicit that it's previously sold to Texas schools. And it requires the vendors to develop and submit to the Texas Education Agency a list of each book containing sexually relevant or explicit material sold to a district prior to April first of twenty twenty-four. The vendors must repeat this process each year, including an updated list by September first of twenty twenty-four. Additionally, the Reader Act allows TEA to review books that were not rated by a vendor. And TEA, if they determine that a book should be rated differently from what the vendor designated, the vendor must comply with the change, or the vendor will be added to a list of vendors from which a school district may not purchase materials. Finally, it does require parental consent for a student to check out sexually relevant books. The Reader Act does include a timeline for implementation by the Texas State Library and Archives Commission, vendors who sell the books to schools and to the school districts. Major dates include September first of this year, which is when the law takes effect. By April first of twenty twenty-four, each library material vendor must submit their initial list to the Texas Education Agency of each book sold to school districts containing explicit and relevant material. This will be followed with an updated list submitted by September first of twenty twenty-four, and vendors will repeat the process every year thereafter. Finally, the Reader Act requires school districts to review the content of each book in their library catalog that is rated as sexually relevant material by the vendor. So by January first of twenty twenty-five, districts will determine, in accordance with their local policy, whether to retain each book and post on the district's website a report that includes the title of each sexually relevant material, the district's decision regarding the material, and at which campus the material is located. And I'm turning it over to Marnie.
It's the big green button. So wanted to talk to you about the changes that we are proposing to the local policy. And we broke them into two different groups, policy changes that were required by the Act and then policy changes that were the consensus of the Library Materials Committee. And so the first change, and I believe there will be in the legal policy, there will be definitions. And in our regulation, we will also have them. But the policy itself, the red line which you'll see in front of you, we added at the very beginning the protection from inappropriate material. Now, we already had, last year, we added this section. And this year, we expanded it. The red line you will see, it includes the specific information required by The red line you will see, it includes the specific information required by HB 900, which is the prohibition against harmful material, sexually explicit material, or obscene material. And then, there are actually definitions in state law. And then, the reference to material that's prohibitive, if it's pervasively vulgar, or it can be removed if educationally unsuitable, that comes from the Supreme Court decision and reference there. And then, in the regulation, we will provide more information so that when the policy is implemented, it will hopefully be a little bit easier for us to discern in addition to the information we get from the vendors and T E A. And so, and you'll also see a change to the collection development standards. Previously, TSLAC is as it's known, but the Texas State Library and Archives Commission has always provided standards that were guides to be implemented by districts as it fit within their collection development practices. HB 900 clarifies that TSLAC will provide those guidelines, and they continue to be advisory with the exception of the collection development standards. And what TSLAC puts in place for collection development standards, those are mandatory, and those will be provided. We do have the framework of what those are going to be, obviously, from the Act, but TSLAC will provide even more specific guidance. And so, once those come out, we will incorporate those possibly into the regulation because our policy says we will follow those standards, and then, kind of the implementation of it will be in regulation. And those, by statute, must be reviewed at least once every five years. And then, challenged resources. As you've heard from Jennifer, Ms. Garstecki, a few minutes ago, really, the focus in HB 900 was on the identification of books and collection development. There really wasn't anything in the law about challenges to instructional, or excuse me, library material resources, except the clarification and the prohibition that a library material may not be removed solely on the basis of the ideas in the material or the personal background of the author or the personal background of the characters in the material. And so, we did add that to EFB Local. And then, some of the other changes you will see come from our Library Materials Committee, and a lot of great discussion. A lot of discussion on the changes that we made last year and how those were implemented, how a lot of them worked, and then, how some of them didn't work as well as we thought they would work in practice. So, we got lots of good feedback on that. And there was lots of good discussion, particularly about the reconsideration process. And that, I thought, was some of the best discussion. And, you know, actual parents in the room sharing their experience with the reconsideration process and things. And their feedback was really important, in particular, in some of the changes that we made because it was really good feedback, and it helped us understand from both aspects of the librarian aspect and the campus aspect of administering that process, and then, the parent aspect of going through it. But to start from the top, the policy committee feedback, we wanted to change, last year, we said all materials before they were added into any of our collections. And as you'll recall, kind of industry standard terms that the publishing industry uses are the collections, the juvenile collection, the young adult collection, and then, the adult collection. And we said that all materials needed to be read in their entirety and recommended or reviewed, meaning professionally reviewed, by industry standard periodicals, and recommended for that collection as well as that grade span. And what we found in implementing that is for nonfiction books that were truly nonfiction, not literary nonfiction, which, you know, hanging out with librarians for the last year, I learned that literary nonfiction is, those are like memoirs. But nonfiction may be an LSAT prep book, or some of the books they were, you know, giving us examples of. And so, there were not any reviews. And not many people were willing to read, you know, the entire dictionary or Thersaurus or the SAT prep book. And so, we realized, kind of functionally, that the purely nonfiction books, we were not able to add those to the collection as readily because there weren't reviews and recommendations. So, it was the consensus to remove those. We also focused that requirement on the young adult and the adult collections because we learned, for instance, as we were opening Brosnahan and trying to fill an entire elementary library, that in the juvenile collection, there's actually not a review on every single volume of Captain Underpants. And so, books such as that, which, you know, some of those juvenile collection books in multiple chapters, we were having a hard time getting those into the collection because there wasn't a review or someone who had reviewed and recommended it. And so, just the practical aspect of it, the committee recommended that change, and the librarians were in great support of that. The informal reconsideration part of the reconsideration request process was something, again, kind of based on a very collaborative conversation between, you know, parents and librarians about what worked. And that, there was a real recommendation on both sides that the informal reconsideration process be one step, not a step that is, you know, optional, that it be step one in a reconsideration process. And so, we clarified that in the local policy at their recommendation, that that is step one. And it starts with the parent, the librarian, and a campus administrator, and that there is a true conference so that the concerns with the material can be explained by the complainant, and, you know, a dialogue happen and hopefully addressed. And the timeline, so as part of that process, if you do move into a formal reconsideration request after the informal piece, it was the timeline in the policy. We moved it from calendar days to school days, and that was universal. That was something that we just didn't realize last year, especially, say, for instance, there may be one copy of a book and, you know, five and six members on the reconsideration process, and they were having to get it read and passed, you know, amongst the committee in a relatively short time period. And it didn't take into account non-business days, holidays, and things like that. And we also got lots of good feedback about that formal reconsideration committee. And there was agreement that it should be a district-level committee and that the participation should be from a district-wide committee, such as how we selected committee members for the Library Materials Committee. So, like our other district-wide committees, there would be application and opportunity to participate. And we've, we'll talk about in the regulation, and that's part of what we will continue to flesh out in the upcoming meetings. But that's the concept, is that it will be a district-level review committee, but that representation from each campus where the material is located would be on that committee. We also did talk about if it is, say, an elementary level book, and it's at 40 campuses, that we would have flexibility within the policy to possibly go to feeder pattern representatives, et cetera, if it is an unwieldy number on the committee. But generally speaking, if, say, it is at a secondary level, and a book is at two campuses or three campuses, then those three campuses would be represented, and that would be with a librarian, administrator, and a parent from that campus on the committee. And that because of it being a district-level review committee, we did make corresponding changes to any appeal process where it would go to the superintendent and then directly to the board. And that's really kind of the most important. There were a few tweaks here and there, but those are really the most important changes to the policy. And thank you very much to Teresa for going upstairs and saving me and getting that for you. As you'll see, without that big purple draft, it is a lot easier to read, Mr. Jackson. And I'm going to turn it over to Linda so she can do some acknowledgements.
So, before we take some questions, as I said earlier, the committee was phenomenal, and the time that they put, that they invested, was beyond what we even asked them to do. And so, we do have a couple of the representatives here, I believe. So, if you've served on the committee, I think we have a couple of people here. Will you stand? Thank you. We did have about 50 representatives on the committee, and we invited them to come, and some are watching, and we had a couple that were able to go. So, I just want to thank them again for all their work. So, we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Let me go to the right, Scott.
Thank you for the presentation. Sorry, the monitor's my boy. Question on the HB 900 Reader Act. It says the guidelines for vendors are going to be determined a book rating system. Do you all believe the book rating system will be different than the current system we have today?
Is my microphone still on? Yeah. And so, they will, as I understand it, I guess, step one is going to be defining the, or not defining because it's defined for us in statute, but denoting the books that are sexually explicit or those that are sexually relevant. And those definitions, as I said, are statutory. And then, from that, that list will go to T E A, and then, that list will come to us. Some districts are, and how they approach it, I think everyone has to make their own decision. I think some people are waiting for that. We had already started looking at our policy at the, you know, at the consensus request of the board. And really, Dr. Henry had asked that we, you know, look at it. Because we knew last year, when we started making changes, that we were gonna, that this was going to have to be something we continue to look at. So, we had already started this process, and we, I mean, the law goes into effect September 1st. And so, we just really felt like we needed to start identifying, you know, identifying this and putting it in our policy and, you know, getting our arms around implementing it rather than waiting. So, I do think that with those tags, Mr. Henry, that, or with those definitions, that there will probably be some tags within it. But I don't see the vendors, and I think it would have to start with the publishers, but I don't see them coming up with something extremely user-friendly for schools like the motion picture industry. That, to me, would be ideal. Because, you know, when you, I remember my kiddos were in middle school, I'd be like, okay, PG 13, and you could look and you could see, you know, why it was PG 13. And you knew, you know, every once in a while, a Disney movie when it wasn't G, then they were, you know, probably had some farting in it. I mean, they, you know, crude humor. I mean, you kind of knew when something, you know, went from G to PG. We don't really have that from the publishers. And so, and I think that will take an additional law and probably a nationwide movement. But they will at least define, eventually identify those two categories of books. But we will be able to, you know, at the local level, and we're, you know, to apply those when we have, when we have the guidance from T E A.
Okay, I think there's an answer in there. Just kidding, Marnie. Can you please define for me?
There was an answer buried in there somewhere, is that?
Can you please define for me the definition of sexually explicit versus sexually relevant? What are those two differentiators? Because I don't see those particularly in your notes or the law particularly. Can you maybe talk about that, please?
Yes, so, let me actually pull, it's statutory. And so, sexually explicit, and we, those will actually be in the EFB legal. And then, we actually plan to, because it's easier to access, we plan to put those definitions in EFB regulation. So, we operationally have it there handy. But that, let me find that for you. Apologize. So, I want to make sure I'm reading it from the... Okay, so, sexually explicit material is defined in Section 33.021A of the Education Code. So, that's 33.021A of the Education Code. And I can send this to you in writing so you're not having to write it down. But it is a material that contains any description, and that's written description, illustration, photographic image, video image, or audio file that describes, depicts, or portrays sexual conduct and sexual conduct as defined in the Texas Penal Code 43.25. And that description is done in a way that's patently offensive, and patently offensive as defined in Section 43.21 of the Texas Penal Code. And so, in our regulation, when we finalize it, but in the draft, I will have that, and then, right underneath it, we will have sexual conduct is defined in 43.25 of the Penal Code to mean sexual contact, and that's the touching. I mean, I'll read it as written if you would, if you're comf-, oh, you would, okay. Because it's...
I can look it up.
Okay. And then, patently offensive is so offensive on its face as to affront the current community standards of decency. And so, sexually explicit has the same definition. It involves sexual conduct, but it is not patently offensive. That's not exactly how it's defined, but I think that's the easiest way to describe it. And so, I would say they are degrees. And so, if it's sexually explicit, meaning it involves the specific definition of sexual conduct, and it is patently offensive in its description. If it is just sexual conduct in the material, then it will be sexually relevant. And that will, as Jen said, under the Act, require parent permission. Was there an answer in there somewhere?
Somewhere is an answer. Yes, my question goes to, we have the definition under PICO1, and we have that. We can also set age-appropriate standards for our policy. Is that correct?
Yes, uh-huh.
Well, as a board, we can put in age-appropriate standards for textbooks, library material, and all those things. Is that correct?
Yes, you can, as a board, you can.
I would suggest, as a board, and I've given this to Marnie as an example, that we put together definitions of what these things are. What is a sex act? What has implied nudity? What is implied sex act? Because right now, we're giving that thing to principals and other people. We really have this wiggle room of trying to figure out what is educationally appropriate. And some of the things I've seen, I don't think were educationally appropriate to our community. They may be to certain people in our district, but not to our community. I think we need to give them better guidance so they can make a better informed decision on what they're looking at. Because what someone's decision on what is something that's appropriate and someone else's may not be the same guide. And it just gives a lot of wiggle room for some people. And then, it causes a lot of this consternation between our community, the students, and the parents. That is my suggestion that I think we maybe should look at. I know I provide the policy through a model policy that we should look at. Because I know, we have talked offline, the Reader Act does not provide those definitions, unfortunately, on purpose, to get it passed. And those are things I think we, as a board, through age-appropriate standards, can do. And I think it's important to do because this gives teachers, because I hear from a lot of teachers all the time that they want more guidance on what they should do. Because I've talked to some teachers, I just threw out everything because I didn't want to do it. And that's not a good thing to do. So, I just think that'd be a great thing for us to do. And that's my substitution that we should look at. I know it's a longer process, Tom, but it's just something we should think about.
And we've talked about, in the regulation, having, like I said, because there are statutory definitions, but you're exactly right, Mr. Henry. What is patently offensive, so offensive on its face as to affront current community standards of decency? I do see that some people, there may be some discussion about how that's applied. So, the definition is there, it's the application of the definition. And so, we have talked about, in the regulation, trying to provide, whether it was examples, or I hadn't thought about how we could kind of quantify the age kind of appropriate standards. We can talk a little bit more about that. But yes, we, because that was some of the feedback from the committee. We need some operational definitions. I understand a statutory definition, but, you know, what does that mean? And so, we did try to add where, in the draft of the regulation. But we started getting into the regulation, and then, I said, guys, we've got to make sure the policy is adopted first, and then, we will, you know, implement the regulation. But we have started that. But we have started that work and we do understand that. We can also talk about putting more in the policy if that's the consensus of the board. Some of the things that we were talking about in the regulation, putting in the policy, we can, we can do it either way.
I appreciate that. Because I know unfortunately lawyers, y'all make things intentionally vague, not on purpose, but it comes across to the layman like myself as intentionally vague sometimes. So this makes it difficult for us to read things on face value and get a consensus of what it means to me versus someone else. And that's the only thing, I think, giving good clear direction from the board in what our policies are for the public is very important. So, but thank you very much for everything y'all have done in the committee as well.
Natalie.
I too would like to thank the committee for their hard work and I want to commend the administration for leading that work and really being thoughtful about the process as we continue. Scott asked one of the questions I had, thank you Scott. And then Marnie, you just answered the second question I had, which I'd like to see that policy, not just regulation, because regulation isn't actually policy, have a little bit more detail. And so I would love to see what that would look like. And then I also would, I also propose that we adopt the age-appropriate language in those definitions and terms such as Scott suggested. So that's all, thank you.
Going to my left, Lucas.
Thank you to the Library Committee. I know it's a lot of work. Thank you to our administration for putting that together. So agreed with Mr. Henry on defining terms and definitions because this past year we saw a pretty wide range of what someone found to be not appropriate versus someone else finding appropriate. And I think the board has a job here. That's our job, to define what those terms are. So I would support that. Next, I wanted to go back to looking at, on page six at the end of it, last year we were, this past year, we wanted to be able to view if a book was challenged. I had actually recommended that we would have a copy of that provided to the board. I see it struck here. Can you give us any feedback and guidance as to why it struck? That the board would not receive a copy, but it would just go to the superintendent? Of the, the decision regarding the recommendation, last sentence, last paragraph. And so it did state that the Board of Trustees, the superintendent, and other appropriate administrators and the complainant shall receive copies of the determination. It now reads, the superintendent and complainant shall receive copies of the determination.
Because we, I believe, and I'm trying to get back, yeah, I thought we put it somewhere, or actually because the way we did, like for instance, the expedited review, there were some things that were not going to be necessary because moving it to a district level committee and then the board being like almost the immediate appeal was why, we can certainly put that back. It was that the board was the superintendent, so the superintendent would get a copy of the determination because he or she would be the, the next level of review and then the board after that. And since we accelerated that appeal process, that was really just an attempt to streamline it and make it more similar to our current appeal process in other areas. But I certainly have zero concern with the board and the superintendent. And honestly, as I'm processing it out loud with you, if that's the next two appeal levels, it's, it's fine for it to, to be received upfront. That's a, that's a good point. That's why I always like to have multiple eyes looking at things. Because sometimes the way I process it might be a little different. So we'll add that back.
I did, I did not read, so to your, you mentioned a appeal to the board. I did not read that in the policy. Maybe I just missed it.
Yeah, so if you'll look on page seven, under appeal, we changed where it will start at level three. And so level three is the superintendent and then the next level would be level four. So I can, and I can be more explicit.
Got it, that's why I didn't see it. Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. I wanted to go back to one of the, so over on page three, it now reads item eight. So one of the criteria indicates having received state and/or national awards. So to our, I have a question on if we see, if we're looking at the awards that a book receives for placement in a school library, is it relevant to which, what category that award was given? I.e., is the award given as a book meant for adult readers or is the award given for a book meant for children readers?
I would, well, I was gonna say, I'm gonna let Ms. Garstecki answer that from an operational standpoint. These are kind of the, the collection development standards, so these are the goals. My understanding is that it would need to be a state or national award relevant to K through 12 readers.
That's correct. That's correct.
But...
So in this last year, we had a number of awards that were given as a, in my understanding is that awards were given as a not K through 12, but books that were relevant towards a adult reader. That's my understanding. Maybe that's incorrect and it's fine if it is.
So we had resources that had awards, but the awards were for like adult reader awards.
Adult reader awards, correct.
Okay.
There were multiple, there were multiple types of awards, just a combination of different awards.
Understood. And where I'm going with it is that I recommend to the board that we actually insert language here, specifically calling out awards given to K through 12 readers.
Sure.
If we're gonna place it into our policy.
Yeah, I think that, I, I do definitely think that's the intent. I don't know that if there was a, a book that received an award outside the K through 12 realm, I would probably, the way this process works, think that there were maybe other reasons. It was part of the collection. If that were the sole reason it was recommended as part of the collection, that would, that would not be consistent with what I understand the purpose of that standard to be.
Understood.
So I think having that clarification is a good one.
One of the questions that I also had was the amount of, so right now HB 900 addresses this idea of sexually explicit versus sexually relevant. It does not express the idea regarding violence. And so to my fellow colleagues, I'm specifically recalling pictures that are in fact violent. I actually don't really want to repeat them in front of the general viewing audience, but includes things such as cutting, use of weapons, et cetera. And I'm wondering if we should adopt some form of perspective on a term of what does the term violence mean and whether or not it has a place. We just got done hearing from Dr. Barker about influence and mental health. And if we have books that are, I mean, good Lord, we had a challenge book this past year that had a picture of a gun in a girl's mouth in a graphic novel. That's a disturbing image, right? Do we need to adopt the standard or at least address the topic of violence in addition to HB 900? So that's a question that I'd like to raise and evaluate among our colleagues and see if we can address that in policy itself. That's all my questions for now, Dr., or President Jackson.
Well, first of all, I too want to thank our Library Committee for all the work they've done. This has been no small task indeed and I am very impressed when I was reading through the policy earlier today with all of the work that has gone into it in such a short amount of time. My, my thanks to you for that. I guess with all due respect, Lucas, I have, you know, when you, we talk about the appeal level and receiving, and we are the final appeal. So therefore I kind of, I have a concern about the, the reports coming to us before that appeal process. It's like when we, we have a, when we have a level four hearing and we don't get all the materials until right before the hearing. And so to, to validate the work of the level four appeal process, I'm just have a concern about the Board of Trustees having that information before that. That would be one concern. And I, I respect your concern about violence, but where, where do we stop defining what constitutes different things, violence? You know, I, I will tell you, I have seen video games and to me that's where I think probably the students maybe that we need to be most concerned about, seeing violence is seen in the video games, in the video, rooms where they, at different places where they play video games. I have maintained for a long time that video games that are violent are a big part of our problems. So while I can appreciate trying to define violence, I'm not sure just exactly, definitely a gun in someone's mouth is violence. But I know from, from their back, where, where does it start? I mean, to me, bullies are violent and that's something we deal with every day in our schools, unfortunately. And not only in our schools, on street corners, you know, shopping malls, they're everywhere. So, you know, I'm just not sure where, how far we can go with all of this and what, what you or I may maintain is violence, some other parent may not, you know? And the violent book should not be with our younger students anyway. As I understand it, that would be at the adult level reading. And those kids will get that material no matter what, because they just have to go to Target or Walmart and buy the, buy the book. So I'm just, I'm a little conflicted, I guess is what I'm saying about that. I, I, I just want to be careful. I don't want, I want to see, as a trustee, I want to do the right thing for our school district and for our students. But I also don't want to be in the position of deciding which books are banned and which are not. And I think this policy is making great strides to put parameters in place. And I think that once we get the regulations from TEA, that that's gonna help us a lot in the process of where do we draw the line? And like I said, do, are, are we supposed to be making decisions for society? Are, are we supposed to be making decisions for our own families? And so there's a fine line there. Because what, what I know, there are some books that I've read that others felt were inappropriate. They dealt with incest. It was a high school level reading book, I believe, deals with incest and things that are totally inappropriate. But it is some of our students' realities. It is the real world for some of our kids. And I have felt that if that book helps that student come forward to a teacher, a counselor, or administrator, it has served its purpose. And not everyone lives in a Pollyanna world where families are perfect and, you know, everything is just perfect. It's incumbent upon us as parents to establish what is appropriate and what is inappropriate for our children. And yes, you have standards for your kids and I have standards for my, I have standards for my children and I have standards for my grandchildren as to what I feel is appropriate. So I just see that we're, we're kind of in a crossroads here, at a crossroads, I guess. And I think that, that we need to do without a doubt what the law states and follow our TEA regulations. Whether we step beyond that, I don't honestly know if I'm comfortable with that. That's my two cents worth.
Julie.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to thank the Library Material Committee for all their hard work. Just for a clarification, I know we shared how the members of the committee were selected through the application process and through a randomization process. But in addition to that, just full transparency, each board member was also allowed to go to the list of applicants and select someone who had not been prior, selected prior to be, also be a member of that committee. So again, full transparency. I looked at that list and there was a middle school parent that had, that middle school was not already represented on the committee and that's who I chose. So to have another middle school parent from a middle school that had not been, was not represented to be on the committee. I do think that the revised policy as presented is an improvement on our prior policy. Obviously, the policy that we came up with and passed last fall at the very beginning of the school year, here we are again, a year later, was, had a lot of changes. It created a lot of, there was a lot of work, a lot of energy that went into implementing that policy and here we are a year later. I appreciate that we're looking at changes based upon input from so many key stakeholders. I think that only makes the policy better. Couple of things about the proposed changes. One, obviously the goal is to comply with state law. That's just a basic foundational thing we have to do is to comply with state law. You know, one thing about HB 900 is it really takes the onus off of independent school districts for making these decisions on what book falls under what category. We don't have to define ages or categories. It's going to be done by the vendors and by the TEA. So it really, it takes that, that, that off of us of having to say what kind of book this is, what category it falls under. That will be done by someone else and we will be implementing that when they, when they provide that list to us. One thing I also like about the proposed changes is that we, it centralizes some of the key processes, like the reconsideration process versus having it be decentralized. One thing that's a strength of Cypher SD is that we tend to have a good balance between centralized processes and functions and decentralized. And I think our prior policy, it was decentralized and we learned that it was probably better to centralize the reconsideration process and be consistent across the district. So I, I think that's a good step. Marnie, I do have some very specific questions to walk through the proposed changes. On page two, under protection from inappropriate material, first paragraph, the last sentence, it says determined by administrative regulation. I was, I wasn't sure, is that Cypher SD's administration, administrative regulation or TEA's or both?
Well, it will ultimately be both. But we, at the request of the committee, we had agreed to try and provide through administrative regulation, a little bit more guidance and definition specifically for educationally unsuitable and, yeah, and pervasively vulgar. There's actually some Supreme Court, not, not in this line of cases, but that you can kind of extrapolate for pervasively vulgar. And I've, I've shared some drafts of that with the committee, but that would be through administrative regulation and that's some of the work that we still need. administrative regulation, and that's some of the work that we still need to do.
So it's Cypher S D. Okay, that's good. Under collection development standards, so I understand, because I've read the H B nine hundred thoroughly, the mandatory collection development standards, I understand that. But then the voluntary standards for school library services, what, what does that refer to? What library services does that?
And that's the, that's the language from the statute, which is why I added and services.
You know, I don't know.
Candidly, I, I'm assuming that they, because T Slack does both K through twelve libraries and public libraries, I think probably public libraries provide some additional services. But since it was explicitly in the statute, I added that. And then we talked, and I said, well, you know, we do checkout Chromebooks, we do, I mean, they do, you know.
Okay, so there'll be some voluntary standards that come as well. Okay. Well, are they always, they, they've always had voluntary standards for library services? Okay. All right, I just was, I just was, that was something specific in the statute that I was confused about. Okay, so, under, now I'm on page four, under parent consideration. Oh, before I go to that, right above parent consideration, we're, the committee was comfortable with our chart where it has grade span and content access level? Was the committee comfortable with that?
Yes, and actually, we, we had, we had a lot of discussion about that, and we, we went a little back and forth. The, really, the question was about sixth grade. And putting it with, because it was a little confusing for the collection base level to not be within the grade span for middle school. And so we made a change. And then really, our middle school librarians on the committee said, we just really feel like we, you know, we need to speak to this, we really feel like sixth grade, their, their base collection should be juvenile and then opt into young adult, as opposed to their base collection being young adult and opting in to the adult collection. And, you know, really, the, we talked about it, and the parents and administrators on the committee, we just, we said, you know what, we are going to defer to the expertise of our middle school librarians. And so the committee changed it back. So we, we went back and forth on that.
Well, no, I appreciate that they were, they were, had a seat at the table and could share their experiences and their knowledge and their expertise.
And the parent, and the, the committee was very vocal too about parent permission, about that they really wanted to rely a lot on that parent making the decision for, for their child.
Always. Well, I mean, that's, that's probably the best thing about the policy that we introduced a year ago, was that the parent has ultimate control, beginning to end a hundred percent on what books their children have access, their own child has access to. Which that leads to my, my next question. Under parent consideration, district staff may assist a student in selecting library material for choice reading. However, the ultimate determination of appropriateness and access to library materials, that's a good addition, for, I, I wrote in mine, for a student remains with that student's parent. So just reinforcing that. It's for, right? It's for a student remains with that student's parent. That is a suggestion I have for an edit, just to be very clear that the parent consideration, each individual student, the parent has the, the ultimate determination for their own student. Also, you know, we say parent throughout all this, and, and even in H B nine hundred, it talks about parents are the primary decision makers regarding a student's access to library material. Is there any need to expand the definition of parent guardian? Or is it just, it's, it's just understood? I mean, all of our students have parents, so.
Yeah.
Is it, but is it just understood and that's not necessary?
Parent is defined under chapter twenty six in and of itself to be, you know, biological adoptive parent, or a person standing in the parental relation to a child in the absence of a parent. And so, but you're, I mean, I could, I can see.
No, I don't, I'm not trying to make any extra work. I'm just going to make sure that that would include anyone who has ultimate accountability and responsibility for a student.
Yeah, but we can certainly say in the beginning, when we say parent, that that is parent or guardian. Parent or guardian, I can add or guardian throughout.
Okay, just to be, just to recognize there are adults who are guardians. Under challenged resources, the first sentence, a parent of a district student, a, I think it should say district student who is eighteen years of age or older, or any district resident, just reinforce it's a district student, just to be consistent. On page five, under guiding principles, the following principles shall guide the board and staff in responding to challenges of library materials. I would like to suggest that we add, the principles shall guide the board, staff, and reconsideration committees. That those principles also guide reconsideration committees. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Taking notes. And you're, and you're correct, that's even on like the forms that we're gonna adopt, that's the.
Okay. Number three, it says access to challenged material shall not be restricted for students during the reconsideration process as, except as provided in this policy. But that actually was removed. So just, do we just take that out? That we don't, we no longer have that exception for the expedited initial review?
Yeah, since we moved it to the district level.
Which I think is a, a good positive change.
Yes, that's a good catch.
Okay, so now I'm on page six. Under formal reconsideration, under the reconsideration committee, should generally include a campus librarian, administrator, and parent from each campus or campus feeder pattern where the challenged material is located at multiple campuses, is really what we're talking about, but may include fewer representatives. Should we, should we have a minimum number or a minimum composition? I mean, I understand we don't want to have forty people on the reconsideration committee, but should we say there should be at least?
Well, we've talked about adding more detail in the regulation. But this was actually a fairly big discussion at the committee too about, they didn't want the committees to be unwieldy if there were.
Sure, especially if you're only giving forty-five days now to complete a reconsideration.
Yes, and if we're sharing materials. And so that was, but we can, I can look at that and see, but probably that lever, level of granularity is typically going to be in an operational regulation.
Okay, no, no problem. And the next page, under frequency of review, so after a library material has been reviewed through the formal reconsideration process, it shall not be reviewed again through the reconsideration process within five years. So cannot be reviewed formally or informally, or just formally?
It, through the process. And so the process includes informal, formal.
So it's both.
Appeal, et cetera. And that was, and that was actually another discussion about aligning with the, the new T Slack review cycle. And then, but we do say unless it's reviewed through the regular library maintenance schedule, we didn't want to, because our librarians do have to weed collections, and they do it by copy, or cop, public, publication, circulation date, things that they'll look at, because we only have so much space. And so we didn't want to inhibit their ability through a regular weeding process, something's got a old, what do y'all, anyway, they were explaining it to me.
No, 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 I remember when I was a volunteer in the library, we would, if books hadn't been checked out for so long, we took them off the shelves because, we weeded them out and to make room for books that the students were interested in. In that same sentence, it talks about five years from the date of reconsideration. Should we be specific and say five years from the date of written determination by the committee? Is it the start, five years from when somebody first raised the question? Or is it five years from, it should be five years from the date of the written determination by the committee? And maybe that's granular as well, but it's good to be specific. Okay, that's all my nitpicky ones. Good? Okay.
Sorry, I was, Teresa was helping me.
No, that's okay. My, my last comments then are not specifically about the content of the, the policy, but just the issue of implementation. I am just very aware that when we implemented this new policy a year ago, it created a lot of work. And great work was done by our librarians and classroom teachers to categorize their books, inventory their books, you know, create the online inventory. I mean, so much great work was done, and it was a lot while we were trying to start school. I want to be conscientious of the implementation of this, any revised policy or revised regulations, that we are respectful of not asking our librarians and classroom teachers to do something that may not be required, that, that I, so I would encourage us to be patient with the process of this law being implemented. So when we looked at the timeline, let me go back to the H B nine hundred, when we looked at the timeline, the, we actually are not responsible for conducting an initial content review and submitting an initial report until January of 2025. Obviously, we don't want to wait till then, but we don't necessarily have to start right now, asking our librarians to start pulling books off of shelves in anticipation of, this book might not be okay. It might be on the list. I think it's, it's, it warrants caution and patience with a process that the state legislature has put in place where it's supposed to go to T E A. T E A is going to write the rules, they're going to send us a list, and then we will, we are supposed to respond to that list. I'm concerned that we try to get ahead of T E A, and then we're just get all tangled up. And we've made, we've asked people to do things that maybe they didn't have to do, or maybe we've, we're just getting in the head of T E A. And I think it's, it warrants that we be patient and wait for guidance from the Texas Education Agency as requested in, in statute and, and House Bill nine hundred. So I, I think that we should respect and honor the law that was passed by our state legislatures and let it go through its process without trying to get ahead of it. That's my thought on that. My only other concern, or just something just for us to also think about, and again, I think this will come out when T E A works through its rules, is the impact on our students who take advanced placement or dual credit classes, especially dual credit. These are college-level classes. They are reading books that maybe we would not necessarily have in our libraries, but maybe it's required for them, maybe it's required to pass the A P literature test, or it's required to complete your dual credit work. So I think we need, maybe need to, I'm hoping some guidance will come with how school districts will partner with, or work with our, our local community colleges, and we may, we ensure that we are not doing, we're not negatively impacting our students who are advanced learners.
So E F A would be the policy that deals with instructional materials. So if a book is part of a course, it's not, it's not applicable to E F B. Now, if there is a library material that as part of the, as, as part of the assignment, you, you know, you get a research book, you do something, a library material can become an instructional resource. And so that's why library materials are oftentimes instructional resources. But a required reading for an A P class, for instance, or a dual credit class, is going to be covered under E F A. That's part of the reason this board chose to, to split those policies. Not every school district did. They chose to address both materials under E F. But you all made the decision a year ago to split, and in large part because it, I think it made it easier to address library materials separately than instructional materials. But I agree with you, we continue to, you know, we continue to look at both policies similarly, but know that dual credit and A P are going to be looked at differently. But our longtime practice in the district is to, and I'll let Linda speak to this, a curriculum practice, but we do provide information about the books, and then parents provide permission, or give permission.
They provide, we've been doing this for a couple of years now. Parents are providing written permission regarding the books that are being used in the classroom, and if they want an alternate book, then we provide that as well.
Well, and I think that's just actually the best policy across the board, right? That parents are engaged and have, again, are the ultimate decision makers on the books that their own, and their own students have access to and utilize. So those are all my questions. Thank you for your patience.
First, let me say thank you to the Library Committee. Not only was this a lot of work, there was a lot of emotional stress involved in doing this work. This has been an emotional topic now for several years, not just in our community, but across the entire United States. And when you're facing emotional situations like this, and it's your name in your face, doing the work, there's additional stress being placed on you. And I just want to say, thank you for stepping up, thank you for taking charge of this. It was not easy on many different fronts, and we're aware of that. A couple of observations. First, to my colleagues, I think you did a fine job reading the document, even with the, the purple highlighter. You know, I really thought it, it might have been bright pink in recognition of movies that are out, but, but purple was chosen. I would speak against the board taking a position on violence. We have books that talk about war. If you've ever read a Jack London book, let me tell you, it's full of violence. I would never be one to say that our children cannot read Jack London. And the list goes on and on. You want to read a book about Quanta Parker, let me tell you, there's plenty of violence in it. I don't know that it's our job to, to shield our children from those. War is violent. Our country was created in the Revolutionary War. I was in Midtown today over lunch talking to a business group, and oddly enough, they wanted me to talk about one of my presentations, The Lion Sleeps Tonight, it's all about the Battle of Trenton. That was violent. That was very violent. One of the slides that I had in there, I talked about the legend of Sleepy Hollow. Well, guess what? That came from an actual situation that occurred in the early stages of the American Revolution. The legend of Sleepy Hollow and how the Headless Horseman became headless is very violent. I do not think as a board that this is an area that it's our job to seek out the definition. It is a slippery slope, and once we go on it, we can never recover. I have only one voice, but I will not be part of that, and I will not support it. I do think that policy needs to stay policy, and the fine details should be down in the regulations. I would disagree with one of my colleagues on parent. If we wanted to bring out the concept of who a parent is, that should be at the beginning of the document. Parent herein is as defined as. And there's no need to go throughout everywhere, listing all of the different potential categories of, of parent. It's very hard for trustees to, to deal with policy, because we want to get down into the specifics and detail, and it is a significant challenge. the specifics and detail. And it is a significant challenge. One of my colleagues spoke about shifting. And we'd be looking over on page four, from a grade span to, to an age span. You know, you know, once again, if we move outside of grades, it, it presents different challenges. I was 16 as a high school senior. In my high school, we had 19-year-old kids. And we have those year spans throughout our district. I think the grade span approach makes good sense. I spent a fair amount of time talking at different times with one of our state representatives, who came up with the idea very early on about shifting the responsibility for the books to the publisher. I applauded him on his thinking and his work. And I said that the work on this really needed to be done at the state level and at the TA level. I think we need to permit the process started by the state to unfold. The, the law provides for state agency to come up with certain working definitions. That's their job. It's our job then to take those, and if they need refinement, we can. But I don't think that from a policy perspective, we want to get in front of that action. I think it creates additional work. Another observation that, that I, I would make. And we talked about this, and I appreciate my colleague bringing it up. When, when our representative was, was talking about moving the responsibility to, to the publisher, we had that discussion here at the board level. If that discussion became law, we were already developing our own policy. Wouldn't that create double work? At that time, we felt the need that we had to go ahead and address this, and we did so. I don't want to create additional work by getting ahead of the state agency that has been directed to provide us guidance. I think the number of books that we're probably talking about are remarkably few, and I would not encourage the expenditure of tremendous resources ahead of the fact in this area. So tho, those are my overarching comments. I did have certain detailed comments. I do appreciate everything that my colleagues brought up, because I think these are all important. These are, in fact, discussions that we have to have. Just because we don't agree with everybody else, doesn't matter. We still have to have these discussions, and the discussions are good. And out of that, we will find the appropriate path forward. So having said that, as I am often want to do, I will circle back around on topics that engender a fair amount of conversation to see if there are additional comments, questions, observations that need, need to be made. Obviously, we'll have another bite at this apple. Let me start to my right. Scott?
No, I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but thank you.
Natalie?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Gilbert. Let me go to my left. Lucas, Debbie, Julie. Once again, thank you to the committee. Much good, hard work. Still more work to be done. And once again, thank you to the board. I think everybody was being sensitive. Everybody did their homework on this topic, and that's how we'll move forth. Did you have comments, Marnie?
So what I was going to say is a couple of things to kind of see if I understand or, and reach consensus. Going, I'm just going to start back from the back. On a copy following a formal reconsideration, or whatever that determination is, one thing I will say, you know, obviously, the board needs to have an awareness of, you know, important things such as, you know, reconsideration, determination. I, I don't have a concern with that. What I was going to say is we started last year, and we will continue, on our library services page to, to ma, to be transparent about that and have our list of books that are under reconsideration, where they are in the process and what the outcome is. So that is one data point. I can, I mean, I was just kind of processing why I made that change. I do not have a concern, I appreciate Debbie kind of processing that, about adding that back in. But I will say also that it will be information on the library services page, so that there is an awareness. And of course, at any time, trustees have a, a right of access to all information. So if somebody's looking at something, and they say, you know, I'd really like to understand that a little bit better, say it's not appealed. And a trustee wants more information, or as a, you know, as a standing rule, they are just want that information, we can certainly do that, you know, for the board. So, so we can talk about that change. That's not a problem.
And Marnie, before you go to the next one, it is public information. I think it's helpful, and I'm asking my colleagues now, that perhaps from time to time, that we might be updated. So it's not our job to constantly go through the Cypher website to see what's been changed.
So why don't I just put it back? I think that's probably, yeah.
But there is value in us being aware. I do understand Debbie's concern that we don't want to develop built-in prejudices, but I do think it's appropriate to, to be aware. Debbie's not here, so we may wait for her to come back.
Yeah, well, and yeah, we can certainly circle back. But that was just, that was just something I was going to share, that maybe a, a worker, or, you know, just kind of a response. Because truly, the, the reason for the removal was really just thinking about, in the context of other changes.
Mr. President.
But it's not something that's really required.
Marnie, just a second.
Yes, Scott? Just a question. I believe, I'm sorry, you can't see me.
I was going to say, I can't see you for the monitor.
It's a grievance process. Is that correct, still? Reconsideration is considered a grievance process?
We use the, either probably the FNG process, but we are, we utilize it in form, and that, and we, but we start at level three.
My only point is on this, I believe we receive other grievances through our board emails as well. Do we not?
So we don't receive them until they reach our level.
Okay. I was just making sure which, which ones we receive. Sometimes I don't look at them.
Yeah, so we never, we, we never receive anything for a grievance one or a two, but only when it hits our level. We get to see everything that's gone up to that point. So we see all the data, but before it comes to us, we really don't know about it. You know, other than we might hear about it in the neighborhood.
I just found the website. It's very easy to get to for us. If you want to get to it, it's easy.
Okay. And then the other thing, and I will circle back when Ms. Blackshire comes back in, but thinking about kind of this conversation about, you know, how we can provide better guidance, I definitely, to our reconsideration committees, and sort of this, you know, giving, you know, parameters and information, you know, about violence. So what, whether it is, I mean, I don't disagree with the concept that, that there are going to be educationally inappropriate books based on the type of, you know, the, the content that is other than sexual. I mean, there, you know, there may be a book that's educationally unsuitable because of the level of violence, or the depiction, or something to that, you know, marked degree. And so thinking about it, as we give more operational definition of, you know, educationally suitable, and we had talked about actually providing some examples or descriptions, violence was one of the things that we, we actually talked about in context. And so I do think that the, the points are valid made all, all around, and that we can address that in a way, I think that is not putting it at the policy level, because that would require such precision in the definition that it might make it, you know, we end up like the legislature, where you, you're trying to address it at such a broad level that it doesn't really give as much guidance as we might hope, as opposed to trying to do it at the regulation level. So why don't I take a stab at that and bring that back? And the same thing with the age-appropriate levels. We, we, to a degree, try to, we have tried to do that already in how we define each collection level in the regulation. And why don't, because this is a lot. We put it as a dual reading, because we thought we, you know, that we all might want to have some guidance going into the new school year. But what I will say is we can bring this back in September. We don't have to do a dual reading if we're not ready. The other thing is we can, I can try to get the regulation, even though it's not going to be final, I can get it in maybe a better spot, bring that back with the policy, so you can see how those work, get some more feedback from the committee, and then bring it back to you. Because the point made by some, a couple, Mr. Jackson, Ms. Heinemann, that we, I mean, we are to a degree still going to be waiting on TA for some parts of it. It's just our, the administration, and I know this board is not a group of people that sits and waits. If there's something that's really not supposed to be, you know, on our shelves, then we are willing to address it now. We're not going to, you know, wait on someone else. But we also aren't going to create work where, where we don't need to create work. So I recognize that it's a tight rope that we're going to try to walk of being, we're going to be in compliance with the law, being in a place that, that we are ready to start school without putting unnecessary pressure on any of our staff, including our wonderful librarians. So I just wanted to throw that out. And so if I can get a consensus from the board on any of that, we can definitely move forward in any of those directions.
And Marnie, the, the guidance that you gave us this year regarding defining the, juvenile, young adult, and the adult, it actually does speak to age appropriateness. It talks about similar age to the, to, to the reader. So it's woven in there already, if you think about it.
It is, and we can flush that out. We can refine that, you know, but we had started somewhat in that, down that road, Mr. Henry, in our regulation in how we define the collection levels. And so we can do more work with that and do work with our committee. But if you guys want to think about that, give some feedback. Talk amongst yourselves, or?
Well, it's always a challenge as a board when we talk about board policy, because we have to do it out in front. I don't think that we have a consensus. Clearly, it makes sense for you to continue to give us more information. Monday, we'll have another bite at the apple, and we may start the school year without this being finalized. You know, when we talk about ages, it's one thing to say age seven. It's all in the details, right? If we say a grade span covers ages blank to blank, that's one meaning of age. If we restrict the age to age eight, that's an entirely different level of description. So I'm, I don't have a problem as if we want to use the numerical age and fit that into what the grade level happens to be. But as I pointed out, we'll have a wide range of ages in any grade level. But you indicated that you wanted to do some more work and come back to the board, and that's, that makes sense, entirely appropriate. However, on, on those, I don't see that we have board consensus. We, we have board questions. We've had board discussions. That then moves us over to 4M. And Vice President Heinemann, I'm going to let you have the microphone for 4M.
4M, the board will consider awarding bids and contracts and/or authorizing purchase orders as recommended in the posted agenda item. There, this is for questions only, and there are no speakers this evening. 4M1, Assorted Food for Nutrition Services 2023. 4M2, CFISD Medicaid Consultation and Billing 2023 through 2024. 4M3, College Readiness and Career Interest Tests. 4M4, Contracted Educational Services and Professional Development Services. 4M5, District Fundraiser Services. 4M6, FCC Application 200021002 Co-Op Quote 2020 Cabling Renewal. 4M7, Literacy Instructional Materials. 4M8, Materials Handling Equipment and Repair Service. 4M9, Restaurant Catering and Delivery Services. 4M10, Roof Repair Services. 4M11, Spirit Apparel and Propotional Items. Are there any questions for Darren Crawford or James Briscoe? Where'd everybody go? Okay. Hello? Y'all have any questions? One, two, three, four. Oh, we have a quorum. Yeah. Let's go. Okay. Are we okay to move these items to consensus?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Okay. Holly, we'll move that to consensus. Boom. Item 4N was removed from the agenda. I'll just keep going. I would like to thank everyone for being here tonight, and I'd also like to thank those who are watching from home. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
I second.
Motion has been made and seconded, and we are adjourned. Thank you.